All right, folks, I would like to call the Douglas Plan and Board Meeting for Thursday, June 23, 2022, to order. Time is 7:04 PM. First item on the agenda, Citizens Forum Call for Public Comment. Anyone in the audience here for anything other than what's on the agenda? Anyone online? Seeing as none. Also, I'd like to acknowledge that Meg Schlesman is on Zoom as a board member. Number two, A and Rs.
Mr. Chairman, do you mind if we move up Item 4B first?
Yes, I have no issue with that. We're going to take Item 4B Bravo. Modification to the July 2022 meeting schedule. We're going to discuss that now.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Town administration, upon several variables here for our agenda, and it being a busy agenda going into this summer, there's an opportunity here for us to meet on June 30 to try to... We've got some items on here that would benefit from having us first meet with the Conservation Commission next week and then come see the planning board. So, the town administrator and I, and Ms. Manerick, and several of the folks involved, felt that June 30 would be an ideal opportunity for us to wrap up a lot of these items in just a week's time. So, if the board is willing and able to attend on that day, be interested to know if that works for everybody.
How many members do we need to be?
Need four.
Four, okay.
Unless it requires, there's no supermajority item.
One special permit, yes. Would need five, so I apologize, yes.
Is there five eligible?
I did do a poll with everybody individually. The only person I think, and I haven't heard from our chairperson yet, but the only person who can attend is Mr. Schultzberg, but everyone else seems to be able to attend, that being Mr. Zwicker, Greco, Marx, Sokrat, and Ms. Schlesman.
I'm away on vacation. I'm kind of around but not around. It's one of those.
I mean, it's one of those things where we can't expect everybody to be here. We had a temporary set six months ago. This is like a pop-up a week beforehand. People have vacation time, kids, and everything else. It's a situation where I know, I'll say I can attend next Thursday, but not everybody's going to be able to. So, the biggest thing is having your five before coming.
Yeah.
Five for a vote, and if you can't have your five for a vote, I don't know what you're going to do.
Just speaking to the members, the folks I spoke to seem to be available on that day. It's good.
So, we have five?
We do have five.
You do?
Yep.
I'm available.
Three gentlemen here. Mr. Sokrat said he was available.
Four.
And Ms. Schlesman said also. That's five.
Who?
Megan.
You're going on that?
Yes, it's a new item.
Oh, new item, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So, that's June 30.
Yes.
And then possibly also Tracy, if she's back. I don't know where, yeah.
Well, we have at least five, maybe six.
Okay.
Okay. We have five, which means we can do any special permits with supermajority vote.
Yes.
Same timeframe, 7 o'clock?
7 o'clock on the 30th. It'd be a motion to modify our meeting schedule to include a meeting on June 30.
Before we do that, how many things will be on the agenda? Is it none?
Well, that's part of why I wanted to do it now through the chair, is having that set, we can decide as we go through our agenda now.
If something can, if we have something that needs to be continued, we have that date available.
All right, so moved.
Is it what? Okay, a second.
Motion made by Mr. Zwicker, second by Mr. Marx. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote.
Ready, Marx? Aye.
Greco, aye.
Mark Zwicker, aye.
Ms. Schlesman, aye.
All right, all set. So, we have a meeting now for June 30, 7 o'clock. Nothing's on the schedule yet. It just, it's an open date for us now to use.
Thank you.
Okay, so A and Rs. Let's go with a CRG Services Management LLC, 105 and 123 Gilboa Street.
Mr. Chairman, Todd Mory, Business Associates.
Hey, Donk.
Following up from our past several meetings, you're representing CRG, and also working tonight is Governor Manerick. The A and R in front of you, I think it's fairly simple, but I've gotten some feedback asking me for a colored version of what's really going on. So, the quick story is, there's currently five lots that we're looking at, it's outlined in this red space. Five lots, two different owners. So, four of the lots are currently owned by the Town of Douglas, and the last lot is owned by KT KT. Last night, I was before the planning board in Huxbridge to deal with proportions of property that are up here.
I assume that line is the water?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. That line right there is the town line.
Okay.
Yep. So, we dealt with these last night. They did sign the bylaw last night, which is on the back table, and hopefully we'll get to the point where we can sign it tonight as well. That's how it's configured today. Again, one, two, three, four lots that are owned by the Town of Douglas, single lot is owned by KT KT. What will look like in the future is a total of four lots, five lots down to four lots, two owners up to three owners. So, these blue ones would still be the Town of Douglas, and it's actually two lots now because we'll get rid of that lot. This lot, this lot is Town of Douglas, this piece KT KT, and this piece goes to CRG in the future. That's what we're proposing, that the, all the lots be all your local requirements as far as size and frontage.
What's the zoning on them?
The zoning on them is all industrial.
Mr. Benoit, any comment on?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did have a chance to review the A and R through its criteria through our subdivision regs, and it does meet all of the criteria. The only amendment that had to be made was to add seven signature lines.
My apologies. Doesn't mean they're.
All right, for the record, Mr. Aaron Sokrat has joined the meeting.
Thank you.
All right, board members, any questions, comments, concerns with this A and R plan for CRG?
Town still has access to all the town land, local, but here's along Gilboa, and on the other side is, yep.
Still has access to all the town land.
Right.
You like that?
I'll make the motion to the A and R.
Motion made by Mr. Marx to approve the A and R.
To endorse, so.
Seconded by Mr. Greco. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, roll call, vote.
It's what we've seen before, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Aaron Sokrat, aye.
Ready, Marx? Aye.
Greco, aye.
Mark Zwicker, aye.
Ms. Schlesman, aye.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, second A and R, B, Michael Martinson, 16 Prentice Court. I think I saw Michael online.
Yeah.
Michael, how are you?
Very good, sir.
Do you have him do a quick rundown, or, Mike, if you can just give us a quick rundown on what's going on?
Sure. What the purpose of the A and R is, is to take small parcels from my uncle's property, which is 16 Gilboa Court, and add it to my property, which is 17 Gilboa Court. I'm sorry, 16 Prentice Court is my uncle's, 17 Gilboa Court is my property. So, we take parcel A and parcel B, and extracted it from his property and basically put it in mine.
All right, Mr. Chairman, so the requirements here, this is an approved reduced frontage lot, excuse me. It's a pre-existing non-conforming lot that has minimum frontage on Prentice Court, but the frontage is not changing. The lot size is still in conformance with the regulations of the zoning district. Cutting off parcels A and B is backland. They are properly labeled as not building lots, so I do not have any issues with the plan as provided.
Who, may I ask through the?
Yes.
Vice Chair? Who has, where it says not a building lot, is that currently your property now, Michael?
No, it's not. It belongs to my uncle currently, which is Kirk Martinson.
Is there any disposition, has he, maybe I'm overstepping, but, I mean, there's issues sometimes where people feel they, you know, they're landlocked. I mean, this is obviously existing landlocked, right?
Correct, that's correct.
Matt, did you shake your head for this?
If.
Do we need a letter from, is that any of our business, from that person who becomes?
I don't think. This is a great question, Ms. Sokrat. So, these aren't landlocked as is today. That's one contiguous parcel. They're creating two landlocked parcels that will then be combined with 17 Gilboa.
Why create landlocked parcels? Why not just have it as part of the parcel?
That's a great question. So, that was one of the things I asked. One way you can do this is to, through the A and Rs, eliminate the lot lines between parcel A and parcel B with 17 Gilboa, so it becomes one contiguous parcel.
Right.
By doing it this way, there are going to be three separate tax bills for three separate lots. But it's still legal as drawn.
Right, but if I can ask the applicant, and maybe it's none of our business, but why is the conception of this being, not being contiguous with the lot that's there, why are you doing this?
Well, that was the question when I had Norman Hill draw this out. He suggested making these two separate parcels. I actually wanted to eliminate the lot lines like you had just suggested and make it one big parcel for 17 Gilboa Court. I guess that is still an option, but he said this would be the easiest way to go about taking those two pieces of property from my uncle.
I see what you're saying. He's acquiring land from Douglas for, so keeping up with the, but it's just going to be under your name.
Yeah, it's just like a name swap.
Just a name swap on the land.
That's correct.
Okay. I see where you're going now, and that's.
Is that, is that cool?
And it can be done and?
It's all, the only reason I'm saying is, you already own the house, if you don't mind asking for the chair up front.
Yes.
So, now you're going to have the two that your uncle owned in the back. So, in reality, you own all of it, but it's just separate parcels.
That's correct.
Okay.
And they're labeled not a buildable lot, so?
Correct.
That's covering all of that, so.
Is there a difference between not a building lot and not a buildable lot?
No, same thing.
In wording?
Same thing.
Same thing? Because it sounds like, currently it's not a building lot, but in the future, maybe it's a building lot. I don't know. Anyway, I'm off on this, but I.
You have to have the access to get into it.
I understand that, if that frontage is in access. I just, I just don't like landlocked lots. Regardless.
That's his prerogative.
Correct.
If they submit it, that's what they want, so. I'll entertain a motion, if anything.
I'll make a motion to endorse A and R plan for Michael Martinson?
Martinson.
Martinson, 16 Prentice Court?
Second.
Second, motion made by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Marx. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, roll call, vote.
Aaron Sokrat, aye.
Ready, Marx? Aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mark Zwicker, aye.
Ms. Schlesman, aye.
Ms. Martinson, you are all set.
Thank you, sir.
Matt, do you have something, does he need to get anything, or?
No, the plan will be signed this evening. It'll be available for pickup at Town Hall Monday.
Great, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
All right, next on the agenda, public hearings. 7:00 PM public hearing continued from May 26, 2022 Sutton Douglas Development. Application for definitive subdivision, DEF-220215, Muffet Road and 5 Forest Street, possible votes. Wayne, Tim, did you present that?
Here, we've done nothing.
Okay.
I apologize to you guys. I was out of work for a couple of weeks, got back to work, and very, very busy, so had to miss a couple of meetings, so.
Not a problem, Mr. Chairman. We know how that is. That is like everybody's busy these days, so.
That being said through the chair, that means the eligible voters are Mr. Sokrat, Mr. Marx, Mr. Greco, and Mr. Zwicker, the only four eligible voters that you would need. You would need all four.
Four hundred.
Thank you. Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mr. Benoit, Wayne Bellick, Land Design Collaborative, I'm here with Tim Flynn of Flynn Build and Develop. I know that we have joining us tonight as well Jeff Walsh from Graves Engineering. I think Mr. Benoit had asked him to join us to discuss closeout of his peer review on the project. We believe we're there. I think in terms of the letter that our firm issued on May 10, we are right there with addressing Mr. Walsh's comments, but I will defer through the chair to Mr. Walsh if that's okay with you folks, as to whether or not he has additional comments.
Mr. Walsh?
Good evening, everybody. For the record, I'm Jeff Walsh with Graves Engineering, peer review consultant to the planning board. We did receive and review the second set of plans supporting stormwater information. We received it on June 6. We issued a letter on June 22, and quite frankly, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have no issues. The plans were in order. I understand waivers were granted. Our previous review comments were addressed. And by the way, I did witness soil testing in three days in late April at the stormwater basins. And if I might, there's three things I'd like to point out to the board that are in my letter that, they're not issues that are major, but three things I want to point out to the board. First of all, item number two, that was a comment about streetlights in the applicant, contractor and the applicant in the time of construction, coordinating with the Town of Douglas to make sure that the streetlight locations in the actual streetlight bases, wiring, lamp, luminaires, all that are consistent with the town requirements, so that if and when this is brought forward for public acceptance, the streetlight locations and the lighting equipment is consistent with the town's requirements. Lot easier to do it that way than to try to figure every little detail out now. I know some towns have been changing protocol they have with national grid. Second item I'd like to discuss is comment number 12, subdivision rules and regulations call for granite curbing at the radii of the intersections. The intersection at Duval Road, which is actually in Sutton, is proposed to be granite curbed, but the interior intersections, my read on the plans is that they're proposing the tubenists like elsewhere within the project. And again, the subdivision rules and regs, as I understand it, require granite curbing at the radius.
In the truck.
Yeah. And then lastly, number 34 is just a drafting issue. The road stationing gives contractor an understanding of ways located on the road. Indivinely, it looks like it turned off on the sheet, needs to be reinstated on the plans. That's what I have. I'm prepared to discuss in greater detail any questions the board members might have with respect to layout, compliance with the subdivision rules and regulations, or stormwater if that matters.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go around the board, see if anyone has any further questions for the consultant.
Yeah, if I remember, I think at the last meeting, we allowed the curbing to be bituminous because of trucks and trailers and tractors. Somebody gets a flat tie, the broken out ruins everybody's day.
Yep, yep.
So, where is it on this that, what was the resolve with the post office, the boxes? Has there been a resolve?
It has, through the chair, exactly where we wanted it. I remember that being an issue. At one point, as you recall, they had two locations.
Yeah.
Wanted to whittle it down to, yeah, so we whittled it down to one centralized location. Didn't take an act of Congress to do that with the USPS, which was surprising, but.
What sheet is it on?
It is on the, one of the plan and profile sheets. I don't have the sheets with me, but I can get you there.
I mean, is it not on the plan shown?
It is on the plan.
Well, give me, what sheet?
Off the top of my head, I can.
We've got a thick book here.
Yep, yep. So, I can get right to it for you, Mike, if that's okay.
That's, I'm taking the easy route.
Yeah.
I mean.
We don't blame you.
Point it out, put it red.
Yeah, so.
Make a special delivery.
So, it is shown on?
Sheet C, C-203.
There he is.
That's why we hired him.
C-203.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Mr. Walsh, you're the man.
I believe it's the intersection of Row A and Row B. Is that white?
Correct, correct. So, with respect to that, you know, if I could, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Walsh had raised a couple of comments. The comment number two that he had, which discussed the light pole itself, we would ask if it's not already in the draft decision, that that be incorporated as a condition. Comment number 12, the granite curb, as Mr. Sokrat indicated, that you folks had voted on that. So, what we had done is on the latest set of plans, we show the bituminous concrete, the Cape Cod berm throughout the site, with the exception of the roundings out at Duval and Road A. They're also located at the catch basins and the curb inlets, and we have gone ahead, added details. Mr. Walsh had called out a, that an additional detail was required as well, so we would add that as a condition of approval. And then finally, in looking at the plan and profile sheets, we did call out the vertical granite curbing in the Cape Cod berm, and I think what we'd like to do is another condition of approval. We can add to the plan set that would be endorsed by the planning board prior to endorsement, a blow up of that area, an enlargement, and a little bit more detail on the call out as to where the granite curbing ends, where the transitional piece of granite is located and its dimensions to the Cape Cod berm. And then finally, condition number 34, or comment number 34, which just, I'm sorry, Jeff, what was that comment on number 34?
Road stationing.
Okay, road, yeah, then.
The road stationing on sheet number C, 307, needs to be reinstated.
Okay.
In the L.A., it should be.
Yep, thank you. So, if we could just add that as a condition as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Board, any other comments or questions or?
Yeah, I mean, I think I see, it's a very minor points, but it's not minor on an everyday basis. It's at the direct intersection of Road A and Road B on C-203, but it's not called out, is it? It's just a graphic.
Yeah, I believe we had called it out if we hadn't.
Well, look on your, take the set.
So, on sheet two.
We will call it out. Yeah, please. I mean, it's a fine point, but I like to see.
So, with respect to its actual, so the way we laid these out is on the grading and drainage sheets. We like to keep that specific pretty much to grading and drainage.
Yeah, I get it.
On the plan and profile sheets, actually, where you're going to see it in the call out is on sheet C-305.
Nice to see you.
Sheet C-305 in the plan view, you'll notice it's called out as community mailbox on concrete pad.
There you go. That's it. Thank you.
And we'd have you welcome, and we've added the detail of concrete pad.
And I'd like to pull in, get the cars off, get their mail, get on their way.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Benoit, any?
I like the direction you're going.
Yeah, that's all right.
I'm sorry?
Any comments, questions, concern with that? Mike?
Everything looks good.
Thank you.
I just have through the chair, at the mailbox, on lighting, that's definitely.
Yes.
Lighting, yes.
Yep. We have, through the chair, we had a lamp post at that location, so we figured that would do a two-in-one deal where we'd have it right at that location as well, so it worked out pretty well.
Especially where you're in this section there and everything else. And I just have one other one on Road D going to Road A on that reverse well.
Which sheet is that?
You can go on C-104.
Okay.
On the curbing, you know how normally a curb is like, four inch, six inch?
So, through the chair at that location, so what we're looking at with the Cape Cod berm, it has one, it's one foot horizontally and three inches vertically at the base of the curb.
Because we were talking about doing that as a half layback curb, like they did in Millbury. You know what I mean, in that one area, where's all that?
Yeah, so.
So, if you went side to side like that, instead of having a full Cape Cod berm, do a half layback that way there, something going around that corner.
They could roll over that, Mike.
Yeah, so through the chair, I believe that the idea, last time we spoke, was that that was, so when tractor, trailer, whatever, they go over it, it's not as detrimental.
It's not.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think they call it a half berm.
Yep, so.
It's a laid back berm. It's wider, but it's only half the height.
So, through the chair, we did, if you recall, at a, if not at the last meeting, the meeting prior to that, we did a presentation on the turning movements of vehicles. We did run, actually, we did run, but we haven't presented that on the, on the turning radii for, let's say, a WB-50, which is a tractor-trailer making that maneuver, and was able to make that right turn.
So, I think in, in that?
Yep.
I mean, through the chair, if that's the request of Ford.
We could throw that in as a condition.
Because through the chair, they had it go one way, tried going up the other way.
Yep.
I have no problem.
Your radii is, your road was, and all that, it's a lot different.
And that's on the inside radius. Yep, that guy right there. All right, thank you.
So, you have no problem with it?
Being someone who has blown out many a time.
Well, this is Mike's jurisdiction.
Otherwise, I mean, otherwise it looks good, you guys. I mean, it's a lot of work. You've answered everything that's been requested of you.
Thank you.
And lights and things like to send it from back as the town, highway department, and everybody else decides, I think that's great.
So, I mean, through the chair, one of the other challenges, just, you know, just using light poles as an example, when we get to that point, as everyone here must know, what is available versus what is no longer in production, and what is supply chain disrupted, all of that, I think it's the easiest way to come back in front of you and say, this is what we're.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
So, through the chair, we have discussed the style of the lamp post, which obviously we would work with the town. It's not going to be your shoebox that you see in an industrial or commercial site. It's going to be more the lantern type, which would be Doc Sky compliant as well, so fairly attractive looking feature and structure.
What's the column? Is it fluted type, or is it?
That's what we'd, that's what we'd like to do, is like the fluted type column.
Nice.
Yeah, and so we'll work with your DPW and see if that works for them as well.
Call the bylaws.
Yep. Thank you.
And one thing through the chair on that is, once you start selling houses in there and building them, at what point do you think you'll start getting some lighting in there? Or will the lighting be going up as your houses move into the park? So, that people that are there have illumination needed. So, once you kind of know, we need 40 lights or 10 lights, I know you're not going to put them all in.
Yep.
But will you start installing and getting it all?
Yeah, so, through the, I mean, it's a great question, right? So, the folks are going to be living there, we're going to make sure, one, they're safe, and two, that they're not, you know, especially because we got the mailboxes up and running. So, we absolutely will take that into consideration.
Continuity of your product is really important.
Yep. Yep. We have phased it in five phases, as you know, so the intent would be to build out each phase so it can pretty much stand alone. So obviously, phase one, which connects to Duval Road, being the first phase, would be pretty much built out. We would start phase two at the end, toward the end of that build out, but all the amenities needed for the subdivision that show up in phase one would be installed.
But just what I think you have to give is that, if you need 40 lamp posts in each phase eight.
Yep.
That you buy the 40 upfronts.
Oh, absolutely.
You have them in stock and-
Absolutely.
And all of a sudden go to a square two, you know?
That's a good call. Thank you.
Happens more often than you think.
All right. Mr. Benoit, any?
Another mic.
Yes, your turn.
Gentlemen, through the chair, just updates from the Town of Sutton and the Douglas Conservation Commission. Sutton has a meeting on Monday, right?
That's correct.
As does the Auburn Douglas Conservation Commission.
That's correct.
Okay.
Is he Monday night?
Yeah, so-
You guys are pretty far along there. What's your anticipation that's going to take place?
So we anticipate that with the planning, or the planning board in Sutton, we will close and receive an approval on Monday night. We anticipate with the Conservation Commission here in town that we will close on Monday night. We have drafted and worked with Mr. Zisk in drafting an order of conditions for the project, so that's pretty much all laid out. So the commission is positioned on Monday night, we've had our sidewalk, they have everything that needs to have been addressed, addressed. So we're at that juncture where that night, they could close the hearing and vote on the project issuing the order. And likewise, Mr. Benoit, through the chair, in the Town of Sutton, we have worked with them on the draft conditions, the covenant and everything, so the Town of Sutton has everything to do the same, and it's our understanding that they plan to do that on Monday night.
Great. Excellent.
Through the chair.
Yes. What kind of charity are we posting for this? Bonding?
Bonding.
Yeah, bonding, yeah.
Any else, Matt?
Still one of my questions, Mr. Marks.
Have you seen him?
Yes. So we do have a phase project.
Paul McCartney.
Great show.
Yeah. So with the phasing, and just for the record, obviously, we've talked about it and how it works and stuff, so with phasing and bonding, I mean, we're talking about construction release, posting bonds in pieces, in five different pieces, or are we looking at full on bonds entire project? What do you guys?
So it'd be, so through the chair, first, obviously, great question, we are looking to do a phase bonding, if it's amenable to the board. I think it makes the most sense to have each phase as independent with one another as possible. Also, economically, it is a little bit easier, so if that's amenable to the board.
So I'm not an expert, Mike, if you might say that. So when that happens, what happens if you finish phase and the little phases that's left, you know, you're out, you know, no more? Because if you have a bond for the whole thing, I mean, I get-
Oh, I get Richard, yes.
I mean, what's the continuity? How does that work?
I guess.
When you, am I asked to answer that?
That's a good question. That is a good question. Through the chair.
Our concern is the planning board. Is that a complete project? We want a complete project. We don't want you guys to go belly leave, you know, whatever.
Understood.
Which has happened before.
So I can, I can answer that. So the entire project's going to be, goes to be under a covenant, kind of covenant restriction. That means that none of the lots ever can be released until the road's installed to a certain point at the board, and then they post the bond, and then we can release the lots. That'll cover the entire subdivision. As far as bonding and phasing goes, they're going to only ask for partial release of that covenant at a time, so they can build sections of the roadway and release certain sections of lots at once, before they move on to the second phase. But the covenant will be the master document that protects the entire project, to make sure that the roadways are constructed and installed prior to that point.
Right, so the covenant that applies to the houses in certain phase, those roadways have to be complete for them to next, from two different ways.
All right, at least to a binder course.
Right.
And then a bond posted before it could be partially.
Right, because the bond will finish the bind, I mean, the final code.
Uh huh.
Okay, it's, it's fine. I mean, we don't, I'm not begrudging your phasing, because I have been the same old problem, but I want to make sure we complete it.
Through the chair, you're going into it, into a good spot here, and that kind of comes to the question that's been raised by a lot of the appunters. There's a significant portion of land here that's proposed to be donated to the town, or at least protected in perpetuity through a trust, and I have to introduce both options because that is the case. So given we are phasing, when do you think you can reasonably anticipate transferring that over? A lot of towns kind of take this where you'll do it all at the end, when the road's ready for public acceptance, and then you take on the road. However, Town of Douglas has been in interesting situations before where that has not taken place, especially given property nearby this, developments brought to our attention by some of the appunters here, yes. So where are you guys at with that, do you know, when you're looking to transfer that land?
Sure, so from our perspective, you know, so we can appreciate where the town has been with the open space on the property, and what the residents have endured, and what was committed to them a couple decades ago. So we can appreciate that, so, and if I could speak for you, Tim, I'd say that, you know, we would defer to the board as to when you folks would be happy with receiving, the town would be happy with receiving the land, and we could do that. You know, if it's at the end of phase one, even if it's at the beginning of phase one, however you folks want it, we're happy to do it.
So if I may, through the, through the chair, we've said it before, I've said it, Wayne said it, I look at this as an ongoing relationship, happy to be, we are as open to donation after hearing when we first started this, during the Anrad phase of what transpired decades ago. So, you know, happy to do whatever needs to be done to meet the needs of the board and through to the others.
Through the vice chair.
Yes.
He's chair today.
Chair. You have no-
I've been called worse, that's all.
I would like to see you upfront upon approval from us.
Sure.
Go ahead, you know, as you're starting this project, to have that conveyed. I just think that that heals, for some folks, probably heals a lot of wounds.
Sure does.
And I think that's part of this trust that we've built and hopefully, you know, continuing that, that this gets done. So I would like to see that happen.
Through the chair.
Absolutely. We are, we are happy to explore that and make that a priority if that's what the board so chooses.
Because we've heard from the public.
Oh, no, absolutely, so have we, loud and clear.
That's great, that's great, you're responding.
Yeah, and so again, that would be, I believe it's 55, I don't know what the exact number is.
Give or take.
Fifty-five, give or take acres.
Whatever it is.
Yeah, absolutely.
So it is give or take. This is part and parcel.
There you go.
This would be gift.
Through the chair, I agree with what Aaron's saying on that aspect, and I think if we get, say, to the end of phase one, and it hasn't been done yet, I think we-
We have something to hold on to.
Yep.
The whole deal until it's taken care of. I understand sometimes you get rocking and rolling, and everything doesn't work, it isn't going to happen at a drop of a dime, but definitely for it to start in the process in the beginning, but definitely by the end of phase one, it must be definitely done, turned over.
Yep.
That way there, then the people that are already living there, say, can enjoy that, can walk there and walk it, do whatever they want.
Yep.
You're already going to have a mailbox, so you're already going to be having residents in that area. So I think starting in the beginning, definitely by the end of phase one.
I'm in agreement with that, Mike.
That way you do have-
You're ready to rock and roll, and I don't want to hold it up because of that.
Correct. But yeah, at the end of phase one, things are rolling.
It's money time to get-
And it's time, okay, it's hard to have it done.
So through the chair, as soon as the plans are endorsed, and the mylaws are recorded, we're going to begin the process with, with team counsel and with Mr. Benoit and town council and the entities involved.
All right, so this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience or online with any questions or comments? Anyone in the audience, anyone online? Board members, any other further comments, sir?
I have one more, Adam, sir.
All right. Okay. And I hate to break it up, obviously, this was raised kind of early on in the beginning, and I don't think anything really materialized of it, but we were obviously talking about egress onto Forest Street neighborhood, and some folks raised concerns about paving the whole neighborhood versus not doing anything, right? And I think concerns and board members talked about, do you want to create a racetrack? Do you want to keep it the same as it is, situations like that. I just didn't know where the board stood on that, because we did have at least two meetings worth of discussion with it, and I just want to get that finalized before we move to a decision.
Through the chair, Mr. Benoit, without starting, I think we've talked about is that the first intersection that comes in, paving up to that, or that intersection, it turns, you know, when it goes onto Forest Street, that pave up into that area there, I mean, we, I mean, we started talking about smaller roads for you guys, trading off square footage for pavement, and it's, there's nothing equitable that can be done completely. It's not, you know, upon you, it's probably more town stuff too, but if you can get up and pave up into that area, and remember, be careful about the lighting with the neighborhood, the neighbors there, talk, listen to about lighting, the corner people live there. So that's my take on it, that there was some indication that, you know, that you would do some of that up to that point of the intersection.
So through the chair, what you're talking about, where Row D intersects with Forest.
Right.
What are you saying, going to Forest a little bit, with vehicles constantly turning?
Yes, just that, come up a bit into that, and that's it. I mean, I think there has to be some equity for everybody.
And that way, that way there, the vehicle's turning, you're not tearing up a road that's already so-so, we add traffic, but you need it, well, what are you talking, 20 feet, 30 feet each side of the intersection?
Probably 20, even 20.
Curve to curb, 20 feet in both directions.
Yeah, in both directions.
Each way at 30 feet each direction.
Right, and that's going to help, because that'll be a benchmark for the town to say, whoa, look at this.
Sure, good call.
Yeah, so maybe they'll get fixed.
Or turn it in.
If the neighbors want it fixed. Sometimes people don't want, you know, racetrack, like you said, but whatever.
So would that be an improvement to the section?
Yeah, would be.
One of the items through the chair that we talked about, instead of asking them to actually pave a specific portion of it, was to contribute funds towards that sort of work, and maybe the town would end up soliciting bids for somebody to do it.
Just get it to the intersection, I mean, that's an extension. We're already there rolling through it, binder and all that, you know?
Just curious what you guys think.
So through the chair, we absolutely knew that, so first and foremost, the majority of the benefit of this project is going to Douglas, with the 55 acres, the tax, happy to go farther into that, but I don't think that's really the answer you want to hear. So we are amenable to paving 20 feet, linear feet, from side to side in the three directions.
Yeah, I mean, that seems reasonable.
Absolutely.
So it'd be like curb 20 feet, curb 20 feet, and the road, whatever that is.
Yes, we would have to work out the logistics of, obviously, by autonomous.
Yeah, because it is town road at that point.
So we would have to work in conjunction with DPW.
You have to work with, you have the highway department.
Yeah, highway department.
And the selectmen of the road commissions.
Yep.
So that's who decides those things.
Okay. So, you know, we can, as long as, we can add that as a condition.
I think that's a plan that we all support, and you agree with it.
Yeah, whether it comes out numerically, or, you know, one or the other, you know, whatever works between all of them.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
And that's, that's good. We don't know now, but the intent is that you guys are going to-
Absolutely. No, we will honor that, and happy to make that a condition.
If I can, through the chair, because like Duval has been recently paved, so you turn out on a nice paved road, you start turning out with vehicles and trucks and things on the road that's falling apart, it's just going to fall apart real bad. At least in the turning radii area, once you're going straight, you've got a real friction on the road.
If I may, again, and I'm sorry for becoming too verbal and stuff.
Nope.
You know, project comes in like this, there are tax revenues, everybody can get it, that's not our thing as the planning board, but-
That's why I-
The fact is that the town should depend more with the neighbors, and if, you know, we've had some great developments coming in, and certain improvements should be made on the backs of neighborhoods, so obviously, Forest and whatever should be up for, you know, I'm not a DPW guy, but in a planning standpoint, when it's on the backs of neighbors, they should get something.
Absolutely.
And the town should pony up, whoever, so, and maybe there is a tax base improving, new revenues and such like that, and it's not, you know, it can go towards capital improvements, doesn't have to go into Prop 2.5 and all that other stuff, but so that's my opinion, I think things should get done.
Understood. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so let's now discuss the next steps going forward with this.
What do we got?
Well, what are we looking to do?
Mr. Chairman, we do have a draft decision, a draft covenant, yet to receive feedback from townhouse just yet, and obviously, we just hashed out some condition ideas here that could get added to the decision. We still have Sutton and Conservation, and it looks like they're ready to vote next week. We could have this draft ready for the board at our June 30th meeting, as you can see, a reason for having that June 30th meeting.
I brought my calendar.
Is right here, so, but given we've heard enough, or we've heard everything from the appunters, it would almost seem reasonable to close a public hearing and then anticipate voting on the decision once it's ready.
I'd say I'd agree.
And I'm going to make it, or I'll make that motion, Ned?
Is that fine with you, to close the hearing? Close the hearing and move, or be on the agenda for the June 30th as well?
Right, right, to vote, and then just closing the hearing.
I apologize, let me add to that. The board could also vote on the project this evening, but then elect to sign the decision at the next meeting. Yeah, I think the next meeting is close enough that it's not like it's another month apart.
It's next week?
I'd like, I'd still like the consensus from the Conservation Commission.
Oh, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
And you might get another voter at the next meeting.
But I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion made to close the hearing made by Mr. Marks, everyone, Mr. Zwicker. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, roll call vote.
Aaron Socrate, yea.
Ready, Marks, aye.
Mike Wicker, aye.
Mike Socrate, aye.
Let's move stage.
All right, public hearing is closed, so we are looking to put you on the agenda then for the 30th, new date, and it just came about, 7:00.
7:00 works for us.
And-
Through the chair.
Yes.
If I may say something to the audience and the neighbors, thank you for coming out and telling us things and letting us know what's going on, because I think we'd get a better project when we have them, the neighbors.
Agreed.
I mean, I'm not just saying that, because I've already just elected, so I don't have to be like-
Through the chair.
Yes.
Kudos to our peer review.
Yes, thank you very much.
Excellent job. Thank you very much.
Been a lot of information, but a very smooth process, so.
Thank you very much, everyone, and we appreciate the work, and the work we want on the projects.
Oh, yeah, there'll be more.
So if I may, through the chair, Jeff, also from a developer who does this in many different towns, and is peer reviewed often, thank you, it was a pleasure working with you, it is a pleasure, and I hope to work together again.
Not done yet.
No, no, I know.
Don't get cocky.
Tim, you're welcome, and I will see you during construction.
Absolutely.
All right, so let's get a, we don't need a vote to- Nope, because we wanted to hear back from the other hearings, so.
Yeah, Kong Kong, and Sutton.
Yep, very well.
And we'll be ready.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mike, give this, Mike, give this to them.
I don't, excellent.
Yeah, just give it to the developers. Don't worry.
Next on the agenda, 7:05, public hearing, Maria Assaker.
Thank you.
Application for accessory apartment AA-220531, public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, sorry to interrupt before you get going on that. Do you need me to stay for any other business this evening?
You know what, that's a great point. We did want Mr. Walsh to talk about the Amp Solar project.
So, okay.
Public hearing. Our consultant is on the clock.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, do this, do these real quick and then.
Sure.
Can you hang out for a couple minutes?
Absolutely. I've got work to do here. I wanted to know what's going on.
All right. All right, so Town Douglas Planning Board, legal notice, public hearing. I'm sure I'm reading the right one here. This is Ledstone.
Yes.
Yeah. Saker, correct?
Yes, I'm Tom Ravain from Ravain Builders representing Maria.
All right. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, Town Douglas accessory apartment zone by law, Section 3.3 and 9.3, the Douglas Planning Board is holding a public hearing on the application for Maria Saker regarding an accessory apartment special permit. The property location is 6 Ledstone Road, Accessus Map 109, Parcel 16.2, Douglas, Mass. The public hearing is being held on Thursday, June 23rd, at 7:05 p.m. in the Douglas Municipal Center Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Massachusetts. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. Visit www.dougus-ma.gov for the agenda and Zoom information. A copy of the application is available for review during regular business hours in the Douglas Community Development Department, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Massachusetts, 01516. Public hearing is now open. Sir, if you can just introduce yourself.
Yes, my name is Tom Ravain. Good evening, every gentleman.
You know, it's good an address for the record for you, Tom.
The address for our building or for myself?
For yourself.
It's 39 Colonial Road, Webster, Mass.
Thank you, sir.
I'm owner of Ravain Builders. We're constructing a home for Maria Saker on 6 Ledstone and after start of the construction and going through the process of building a new home, I guess she has wanted to finish a small area down in her basement for her mom to come up and stay in, I guess during the summer months. Her mom lives in Florida or something like that, so she wants to finish a portion of her room. And the way we built the house with the layout of the land, we were able to have a nice walkout on one side of the lot. So, we were able to kind of give a nice area for that to finish, which is just for a bedroom and that's pretty much it. It's pretty cut and dry. We haven't changed any of the structure of the house, any of the original plans that were approved. On the house, it's the same house, same everything. No exterior work is done. It's all internal work in the basement.
Mr. Benoy, if you can just go through the checklist, make sure that it checks off for you.
Yeah, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, we had reviewed this already. This is the area, accessory apartment, 792 square feet. There is, this is for a family member. This does fit the criteria under our regulations. The only, and correct me, Mr. Ravain, through the chair, I thought we had a rendering that didn't show the door on the back because it was an older rendering.
Yeah, well, I sent the pictures.
Okay.
Yeah, we had requested the.
There it is, right.
Yeah, we had sent the pictures of actual house.
Thank you. And.
Is that a slider that's down?
Yep.
Yeah, I see that.
Yep.
That was the only outstanding thing I had, Mr. Chairman. Otherwise, this seems to meet the criteria of our regulations.
Right, the windows like full height.
Yeah, they're full height.
Less than 44.
Correct, yeah.
All that, yeah.
Yeah, meets all the requirements.
All right, so we'll go around the table. Any questions, comments?
Through the chair, one thing, there'll only be one meter on this house, correct?
Correct, yep.
Yeah, so I mean, it's different because it's a brand new house. This is from concept.
Yes, correct.
Nice.
Yeah, basement is.
What's the total square footage of that?
For the basement, 792.
792. So, he's under this, what do you?
Yep.
What's the mother's first name?
I'm not even sure.
Which mother is it?
It's Maria's mother from Florida. I'm just on the building. Yeah, Maria's, I think it's Gloria, actually.
Well, normally, we see a name.
I think it's Gloria, actually. It might be on here. You know what? I think it is on there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I had, oh, no, yeah, I put mother because she didn't.
Meg, you're online. Do you have any questions, comments, concerns?
I just had a question if there is a requirement in the bylaw for a lot of time for occupancy.
The permit is for three years.
Three years.
Just, is seasonal okay? And only because I'm new and I don't know, you know, in terms of someone applying for an accessory apartment special permit, does that person have to be there for a certain amount of time or can they come and go?
No, the permit's issued for. Through the chair? Yes. Permit's issued for three years, maybe, and then they have to renew it every three years.
It's a minimum.
Is it like a part-time basis?
Oh, is there a minimum? No, there's no minimum, no.
Do you know of any minimum?
Nothing I know of anyway.
Nothing, no restrictions, no?
No, that's, it's the first time it's come up.
Yeah, through the chair, just, again, me sort of consuming, me coming from another town and still consuming our accessory. It says here, accessory shall be rented at price of, it says no. So, clearly, the most important thing for us now is for a family member, and I've sort of grasped on this. And personally, we don't care if she's there for a day a year or not, you know, it's just getting it proven it's there for her and no one else, so it's being rented, that's what it says here.
There's nothing binding that they have to be there a full-time basis or anything like that.
Once, through the chair, once the applicant becomes a different person or that person leaves, you can't rent it as an apartment. And he's supposed to remove the kitchen and turn it back into a one-family house. There are rules governing what you can and can't do with an accessory apartment.
Is the stove our, let me test on, a stove could be removed, it's just a wet bar at once, right? It's a stove?
Yeah, you just can't have, you can't, you can't have two, you can't have a two apartments.
Units, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, through the chair, I think it is, I think it is just a stove. That is the reason why we had to, because if there wasn't a stove, then it was just.
You could have 40 wet bars.
Yeah, exactly.
You could do that, yeah.
Yep.
That's a very good question.
They're only limited by septic, so how many bedrooms?
And it's a four, it's four-bedroom. We ought to check that out through the board house.
With the accessory.
Correct.
Your four-bedroom system, as long as that matches up.
Yep, no.
And then you can always do a D, you know, a D restriction if you have to.
Correct.
So, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience or online with any questions for this project? Seeing as none, board, any other questions, comments, concerns?
They close the public hearing?
So, motion made to close the hearing made by Mr. Marks, Mr. Zwicker. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
All right.
To close, roll call vote, close.
Got to make a motion.
Motion two.
Good choice.
Yeah, you can do that empty, close the public hearing. You can do them together.
We close.
Oh, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Well, we do, we have to do a roll call vote.
Timeout, timeout, timeout.
Freddie Marks, aye.
To close the hearing.
I'm going to stop, I'm going to stop you right there. Sorry, guys. The proper procedure is Mr. Schelsberg opened, made the announcement to open. He will also make the announcement to close.
Okay.
So, you don't need a roll call for that.
Okay. The public hearing is now closed.
Thank you.
So, now we would entertain a motion to endorse or?
No, no.
All right, hold on. What just happened?
Close the hearing.
I just closed the public hearing.
Yes.
You closed the public hearing.
Right, I made a motion.
You want it, you can.
I second it.
So, roll call.
We don't, it doesn't require a roll call vote, is that what you're saying?
Mm-hmm, it's okay, carry on. What I'm getting at is through, there is no motion to open or close any public hearings if the chairperson makes the announcement. The only reason we do it is because often that announcement is not made. So, the only way that a member can do it is by motion.
Right.
So, if it's open and closed by the chair, we don't need motions at all.
See, Robert knows everything.
For 30 years, he's done it that way, you go right ahead, or you do it the way you do it.
I'm fine doing it that way, they just.
I don't care.
I question that, but I'm not sure, but I mean, you.
You've made all this.
Probably right.
We'll figure it out after, so let's do a roll call vote to go around.
I just don't see how one person can open a public hearing and close it. I think the board should have the authority to open it and close it.
I'm with you. I like it that way.
Yeah.
But the way the rules read is.
Nice for you to keep it that way.
So, why don't we do it?
That's fine, that's fine.
You go right ahead. I seconded it.
All right, the motion was made by Mr. Marks, seconded by Mr. Zwicker. Roll call vote to close the hearing.
Aaron Sokrath, aye.
Freddie Marks, aye.
Mike Rucko, aye. Mike Sokrath, aye.
Thanks, Leslie.
The public hearing is now closed. So, now I will entertain a motion to, do as the board sees fit.
So, who?
Two. So, I'll entertain a motion to endorse the public, the accessory apartment for 6 Ledstone Road.
So, who?
Second.
Made by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Marks, roll call vote.
Aaron Sokrath, aye.
Freddie Marks, aye.
Mike Rucko, aye. Mike Sokrath, aye.
Thanks, Leslie.
All sets, we will sign paperwork.
Yep, good luck.
Yep, thank you.
No problem.
We actually did it twice.
So.
I got deep into Robert's rules on that one.
Jeff, are you still on?
Sorry about that, yes, I am.
All right, I'll entertain the possibility of taking someone out of order and going over, he's Walon Lake Solar?
Yes, please.
Okay. Board, any issues doing ASD Walon Lake Solar right now between these two hearings? While Jeff's still online.
Thank you for doing that, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so we're going to discuss Walon Lake Solar, 269 Walon Lake Road, SPR-181002, stormwater system update.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to do a general update on this, if that's okay?
Yes.
Thank you. So, as we all know, this project had some stormwater function issues in 2021, whereas we engaged Mr. Walsh to review the system. And then after some time had passed throughout the winter season, we finally did get, Mr. Walsh did a great analysis to identify some issues with the system. The company then gave us a revi, some revisions that are in your packet today. And Mr. Walsh has then reviewed those revisions, and that's where we are now. The purpose of being here today is just keep the public informed as they've been asking us to do. And Mr. Walsh, having been here for the other item, I thought it would be helpful for everyone to just to hear his point of view for where the system stands today.
Mr. Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. Benoy. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, again, for the record, my name is Jeff Walsh from Woodbridge Engineering. I'm peer reviewer for the Douglas Planning Board. Having reviewed this project off, you know, the various pieces of information that came in since last year, you know, I've always heard from some that there's a lot of water leaving that site, leaving that site. And, you know, my review started out trying to make it, have a good understanding of what was going on. Wasn't necessarily looking for a smoking gun, but I tried to understand the hydrology modeling and what possibly could be causing such an occurrence of people complaining about excess water. We hear that, I hear that as a peer reviewer in a lot of communities often. And the hard thing is to, you know, these people, people in general that live near these types of facilities, they know the ground in the land a lot better than I do, but I've got to listen to what's being heard. The short of it is, when my review got underway, I was going down the path of some of the modeling issues with respect to ground cover and some other things that, I don't want to try to get too deep into the engineering, but I thought I had a smoking gun. And then the short of it was, no, I didn't, the design team did make, make some adjustments to adjust my, address my earlier comments back last year. The hydrology modeling was, was, had addressed my comments. And then I continued on earlier this year and I dug in and I rechecked some things that others had looked at years ago and I had looked at last year. And I came to how they modeled the outlet control structures a few months ago, that, without trying to get into the detail of it, the outlet and structures, structures consist of a large pipe going out of the structures and a number of different orifices or openings that allow water into the structures. And I guess the best way to describe this is, just like with electrical circuits, where you can have series circuits and parallel circuits, that is electricity that flows through one thing and then another versus electricity can flow through one line or the other, but not both. That's the same thing that happens with modeling these outlet structures. And they had that type of modeling in error, quite frankly. And that, that to me was a smoking gun. I figured when I, when I brought it to their attention, it was a couple, three months ago, they had a change of engineers over at the design firm. But when I received the new information from the new design engineer, the modeling was corrected and it showed that there was an increase in peak rates of runoff. And then beyond that, they put forward a proposal that's, that's, I guess, put forward through the hydrology, but not formally through a plan yet, that they want to reduce the size of the lowest openings in the stormwater basins. And they've got some openings up higher. There are horizontal grays on the top of the structures. They want to reduce the size of those a little bit by about 7, by about 25% and raise the elevations a little bit. The bottom line, to me, this is the smoking gun that the hydrology model just wasn't in, you know, wasn't correct the way it was demodeled. And, and the, where am I going with this? The thing is, the hydrology works. And not only does it work, but what you cannot see, and boy, I need a lot of time to kind of explain and show you how this works, but the restriction of those orifices that they're proposing during a storm, when the storm's starting and the intensity of the rainfalls getting stronger and stronger, that's when those smaller orifices will make the most difference in a positive way by holding that water in pond and not releasing it as quickly. And this is long before the peak of the storm occurs, when we look at the peak rates of like a two-year storm or a 10-year storm. If we were to look at their hydrology now versus then, the peak rates only, you wouldn't see such a difference. But again, the restriction of these orifices, in my opinion, is going to make a big difference if and when the applicant implements the, the changes that they propose in the hydrology. Sorry about a long discussion, but I just want you to understand that I really feel this is going to make a big difference.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Awesome, thank you. Welcome.
Feel something?
That was, that was the most of it. I mean, in layman's terms, ultimately, it's going to slow down the water and retain it in the pond a little longer before it releases. So, Jeff did spend a significant amount of time explaining it to me, and it's complicated, there's no doubt about it. But I really appreciate the review that he did, and I just want to get the board updated also, so.
Is this being implemented?
That's the next, next question to the board is, would you like to request presence from Amp Solar at a next meeting and try to request a schedule on when they wish to start these modifications?
As soon as possible, yeah.
Also.
And then ongoing issues in the care.
Sure.
It's been an issue right along, I think, sooner than later.
Yeah, absolutely. I would agree with that.
I think there might be a request to retain Mr. Walsh on this so that he can conduct the final inspection of the work once it's finished.
Please?
Okay, thank you.
And, if I may, so when they come back, they're going to come back to us. We should have a, in cases that I can afford, I mean, you should be here on.
Agreed, agreed.
And can we get this done rather soon or later? What do we have to give them? What do they need notification for? How much?
They just need to let us know when they're willing to do the work. They have a review, a follow-up review, and want to see how they feel about Jeff's final review, which came in today. So, we'll see what their response is and when they're ready to get started.
We'll put them on the next agenda then.
Sure.
The 30th or like the next, next one?
At least maybe information on the 30th.
Okay.
I don't know if we'll get a response within the week.
Yeah, we'll see.
It'd be nice to know what's going on.
Yeah, especially for the residents, to keep it up to date.
Keep this at the top of the priority once.
Yes, we'll put that on for the 30th. Just a little update on that.
Great.
Keep it going. Mr. Walsh, does that work for you?
Absolutely. I'm available for 30th, if you'd like me at the meeting. And I'd like to think that they're going to offer that, yes, they'd like to perform the work. Quite frankly, in my opinion, it's pretty short money for them to make these changes. But nevertheless, I'd like to see what they have to say.
All right.
Awesome.
Excellent.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh, in looking over this project, when we took on this project and when the applicant came in, it was stressed numerous times that runoff had to be controlled. And the engineering that was probably approved, was it built to the specs of the engineering that we, the board, approved? Or was this a catastrophic failure from the beginning when they built it? Did they do it wrong? Is that what the problem was? Did they follow the plans?
I did not take, in their last seminar, they provided very recent survey of the two stormwater basins. I did not take the time to compare that with the approved plans, and I'd be glad to do so going forward. What I did is I used the information on that ASCO, those ASCO plans, to compare to the hydrology model. Just stepping back and looking basically at general size of the basins and the type of outlet structures, it appears that they were substantially in accordance with the plans. I always wondered why there was such a big orifice in the bottom of each of the basins. And it was that hydrology modeling that didn't account mathematically for water being released early in a storm event, which was physically occurring out of the site. And so, to answer your question, I think the basins were constructed substantially in accordance with the approved plans. But what we're finding out after the fact is that those large orifices at the bottom of those large orifices at the bottom of the basins needed to be smaller. And what's, what's going to happen now is more of the storage volume available in the basins will be used after the modifications are made, because not only physically, but mathematically, the water is going to be held in the basins.
All right, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Very good. All right, moving on. Next on the agenda is a public hearing for McIntyre Loom, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Yes, all right.
Excuse me, will you allow me questions?
Let's hear a short question from you. We just have a very tight agenda, what do you have?
Name.
Yeah, name and address though, first.
My name is Jean Lawrence, 119 Shore Road. Well, I've got a few questions, I don't know which one to pick, but one of them is whether, since there was an error and it created flooding and damage, particularly to Madeline Myers property, I want to know whether, whether the board would require, before they approve it, that any damage is made whole to the neighbors?
Yeah.
And then, what are the surety we will have, that it would be okay going forward?
Okay, yeah, so that's going to have to go up with, like, town council.
It's a legal question between you and the developer.
Yeah.
Transparency, I'm recording this, I don't know if that's okay, publicly, I'm recording the voice recording, is that okay? I'll delete it if you want me to.
Well, the meeting, the meeting is audio and video recorded, so a question like that, we would defer you to your attorney. It's a civil matter at that point.
You're, you're saying that we would need to hire an attorney to go through that in order to get, obviously, fair?
We're not, we're not going down this road. This is not a question.
All right. This is a civil matter, I would recommend possibly that you speak to attorney, or maybe reach out to the town council for a question on that. It's not something we're going to handle at this meeting here tonight.
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to move forward from that, and I offered you the advice, and everything has been recorded with these meetings, so.
Okay, just last comment, I'd just like to make a formal request on behalf of the neighbors there, several of which are affected, and that's why I was recording, so they could hear it quickly, that you not approve this until the solar farm makes, you know, go down that. Now Lawrence Cook has indicated he probably would, and he sent an inspector to Madeline Myers.
May I, may I, I'm going to, I just, you want us to not approve the improvements to the project that would prevent further issues?
No, 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 I appreciate that you're doing that, I'm very glad, I'm going to thank Mr. Walsh, because he missed, and yeah, that's great. No, I just mean, could it be, they need to fix it, but also, what happens to the damage that's already happened to?
We can't discuss that now. It's not for the planning board to discuss.
It's up to the board to answer that question, we don't know that.
I wish I had an answer for you, but that's not for the board right at this moment.
The board, it's, it's hard.
It's not a jurisdiction.
So we're working on fixing it, it's, it's moving forward.
Yeah.
And we're moving forward with our agenda. Thank you, Mr.
Are you addressing?
No, we're going to move forward. Public hearing for McIntyre Loom, it's going to be application for earth removal permit, ER-220601, and site plan review, SPR-220601.
I'm going to read the whole. How many are? Stop right here.
Okay, and it's only the one announcement?
Could the gentlemen that are standing down introduce themselves, please, the two new gentlemen?
They will, certainly.
Yeah, let me just open up the hearing, and they have to introduce themselves. Okay, time of Douglas Plan Aboard, legal notice of public hearing, name of applicant, McIntyre Loom Incorporated, name of owner, J. Taylor Construction Company Incorporated, and Second Generation Partners LLC. Date and time of public hearing, Thursday, June 23rd, 2022, at 7:10 PM. Subject matter of the hearing, the applicant has requested an earth removal permit from the Douglas Plan Aboard pursuant to the Douglas Zone Bylaw, Section 6.1 and 9.3, and is requesting a site plan review under Section 9.4. Project description, the project consists of creating a level gravel surface to facilitate the operations of process and landscape and construction materials. Project site and location, Zero Davis Street, near 100, Douglas, Massachusetts, Accesses Map 168, Parcell 7, 8, and Partial 9. Place of public hearing, Douglas Municipal Center, Resource Room 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. Public hearing is now open. Gentlemen.
Good evening, Thomas McIntyre, the applicant, for McIntyre Loom, the applicant.
Good evening to the board members, the chair, and Mr. Bill, Mike Dryden, Senior Project Manager with Allen Engineering, of course, here on behalf of the applicant, named Thomas, of course, here tonight. So what I'd like to do is just spend a few minutes to talk about existing and proposed conditions, talk a little bit about the unique nature of this project. What you have on the board is the context plan shown in bold, this Lot 6, it's 21 acres. Of course, this lot was created as part of the recent approval of the definitive subdivision for Peter Michael Business Park. Lot 6 has frontage at the end of Legacy Circle. Again, it's 21 acres, it's in the, this lot is located entirely within the industrial district. The resource areas on the site, allow me to flip the page.
I apologize, and I don't mean to interrupt, and I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, but we do have a member participating remotely today, so it might be more helpful to move the easel on that side, so she can see through the camera.
I was following the lead of the last guy.
I understand.
It's a good point.
Thank you. I didn't catch it till after, the last guy.
Does that work?
I hope so.
I'll stay up here for a moment, if that's okay.
Sure, any of us can see it now, so.
So I just wanted to show you at a larger scale, we're at, when it equals 50 feet, the property outline, tough to see the mold line for the perimeter, but this is showing the resource areas, which were subject to an ENRAD that was just approved by the Conservation Commission, I think you just passed that with Tom.
Correct, correct.
So that basically confirms the resource area. I just want to note that these plans that are currently in front of you need to be revised, because as part of the ENRAD process, we made some changes to the resource areas, very minor in nature. I think the most significant of which was this intermittent stream, and you may have read this in the comments from McCarthy Engineering, this is named an intermittent stream, yet it had a 200-foot riverfront area, so a little bit of discrepancy there. It was determined that the stream is in fact intermittent, so there's no 200-foot riverfront area associated with it. Where it meets up with Dunn Levy Brook, it becomes perennial, and therefore has a riverfront associated with it. So this line will come off of the plan. There were also, also some very minor bordering vegetated wetland changes, we added a few flags, I think seven flags in total. So you'll see that the next iteration of the plan, those minor changes. We also did a pretty extensive test pit program out here, you see these various test pits, to determine where we had soil overburden, bedrock, to determine estimated seasonal high groundwater, things of that nature, so fairly extensive testing program. The topography, very irregular, a lot of high and low points, valleys, ridges. The overall topographic relief is about 30 feet at its maximum point. So I'm going to just flip the page, and then I'll join that page, we'll stay on this one. This is the earthwork plan. So first and foremost, as you'll recall, this same property received a use special permit, I think it was in March, Tom, is that correct? So, so that allowed the processing of material outside of a building, essentially. So I just wanted to remind the board of that. And the project in general is, it's unique in nature, because the site plan does not have any structures, there are no structures proposed as part of this project whatsoever. So really, the goal here with this plan is just to create a level surface for Mr. McIntyre to run his operation. So again, very unique in that nature, where there's no buildings proposed. So therefore, it's not afforded an exemption under the earthwork regulations. If you look at the earthwork bylaw, Section 6, I believe it is, they list exemptions, and typically where you have a site plan and the earthwork is ancillary to a building, you don't need to go through the earthwork process. So again, this is kind of unique in that sense, we're calling it sort of the belts and suspenders approach, if you will, because we filed a special permit for the earthwork, as well as a site plan, which really serves as a functional equivalent of a building permit. Hopefully that made sense to you all. So the, the project itself is pretty straightforward. The grades that you see on the plan are just removal of earth and ledge, that limit of work is 12 of the 21 acres, and the goal is to create a level surface, essentially. So that level surface minus offgrading and access is probably around 11.25 acre, that's the goal of this plan. So again, no buildings, no utilities to talk about, other than potential overhead wires that will be brought to the site for power. It's really that simple, from a site planning standpoint. Access will be derived, it's on the lower left corner of the sheet there, there's 24-foot wide compacted gravel access, we do have to cross the gas transmission line to access this site, so we're currently working with the owner of that easement to get approvals to cross. The design, as it is currently constituted, meets all of the gas company standards, we just need to go through that formal process. You'll notice on the plan, if I could point to them, there's three basins, one there, one there, and a third one in this location. What I've done is, I've separated the site with a ridge along the center, such that the northern portion all drains to this basin, the southern portion drains to these smaller basins. Also part of the plan are perimeter swales, such that any water that is making its way to the perimeter is diverted and captured and conveyed in swales with stone check dams, so that all that surface runoff is, is conveyed to those three basins. As part of the application, we did have several, I believe nine waiver requests, and if it be the pleasure of the board, I'd like to go through each of those waivers. Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Take your time.
Is there a list of them?
Yeah, it's on page two of the narrative that was provided, sort of midway in the packet.
Weaver, all right.
Okay, I won't read it word for word, I'll just sort of summarize here, just in the spirit of expediting things. Waiver number one, a bond is required, again, typically with an earthwork permit, you would have bonding, and again, because of the unique nature of this project, and the fact that we do have a site plan that is the functional equivalent of a building permit, we are requesting a waiver for bonding. And please stop me at any time if you want to discuss any of these, or have questions. Waiver number two, no excavation approved by a special permit here, under maybe within 100 feet of the existing public way or adjacent property. I will point out two areas where we are closer, Lot 5, that was created part of the subdivision here, this is the lot line to it, we are within 20 feet of that lot line, from about here to here. There's another area where this basin is, where we're slightly closer to the western property boundary. So we've asked a waiver for that. Turning the page to waiver request number three, excavation not intended for approved building purposes or any other activity, or building shall not be within 100 feet of wetland resource areas, we are requesting a waiver from that requirement in the earthwork bylaw to go within 50 feet of the wetland resource areas. And of course, that is discretionary on the part of the Conservation Commission, and will be, will be before them on Monday to discuss that. Request number four, no excavation shall be made less than 10 feet above annual high water table. We're requesting to go within four feet, which is very standard, that four-foot offset will be in the three basin areas that I pointed out earlier. That's, four feet is sort of a magical number from a stormwater management standpoint, it allows us to avoid mounding analyses and things of that nature. So again, if we were placing a building on this site, we certainly wouldn't be subject to a 10-foot offset to groundwater, so that's a critical waiver for us. Waiver number five, all top and subsoil should be stripped and stockpiled in use for restoring. So just to sort of jump ahead a little bit, this is analogous to several other waiver requests. Obviously, we want to create this pad, and Tom wants to use the site for his processing, we don't want to put loam and seed down and have a grassy area, this needs to be a gravel compacted area for the foreseeable future. Number six, the area of excavation shall not exceed 10 acres. What we have here, as I, as I mentioned, the overall limit of work, including the access and the offgrading slopes, is about 12 acres. So if you subtract those elements, we're, we're about 11.25 area, acres of actual pad, so we're asking, it just seemed to make sense here, rather than leave a little portion of the site left, we just asked for a waiver there. Waiver number seven, restoration, again, I just talked about that, so we're asking for relief for essentially all of those things that are related to restoration, with the exception of side slopes, of course, the intent is to loam and seed side slopes and permanently stabilize those areas, it's just the, the flat pad itself that will remain Waiver number eight, again, analogous to what we just talked about. And then finally, number nine, current property taxes, as you may recall, with the use special permit, a waiver was granted at that time, such that the property would not be considered in arrears, in that when this deal happens, the back taxes will be paid at that time, again, exactly the way it played out with the use special permit.
All right, that possibly might have already happened, I'm not entirely sure, but I think the taxes might have been paid very recently, since the time of this application. Don't quote me on that, but I think it may have.
So to be safe, the waiver will still request, so, any questions relative to the waivers?
Well, in a, through the chair, this is in response to the other project we previously, you've got to go to one, right?
Exactly, yep.
Right, so this is our completion, we're getting back in the project we just approved for the CRG, so that's okay, all right?
Exactly, if I, through the chair, basically, we're trying to pick up our operation, move it to the site, and that's kind of what we're doing here, so gravel floor, pad, which is what we have now, and.
And a tuffus, a fugue, right, we've got to move along here, right, we don't want to, tuffus, it just means time is up in the course.
It certainly is.
It's a laughing, it's a laughing.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Bless me.
Through the chair, a couple things, I know you're saying not building a building, but you are going to be having a trailer on the scale.
Nope, not, not proposed at this time.
Yeah, so this did, through the chair, this did come up the other day with our staff, and, and Mr. McIntyre wasn't able to be at that meeting, I was uncertain at that time if the trailer was going to be required. We, the building commissioner made it clear that a permanent trailer was not allowed under the bylaw, so we just want to stress that, as I did note in my narrative, there are no structures proposed as part of this project.
The office is in a running truck, right?
No, there wouldn't be an office portion of this.
No, no, you're doing.
Portion of the lot, yeah.
You could have decided to leave.
Right, right.
You will be on the scale, well.
Not, there's no immediate plans to do that, and not, might not even be on this lot.
Through the chair, are you stockpiling material as you're doing this excavation? Is any material leaving the, the area?
Yes, but we'd also be bringing material in and selling as part of our ordinary business, so we're in the business of processing and wholesaling materials.
Right.
So as things were removed, we would be processing it in a way that could be sold as different products. Those would be leaving the lot as finished products to contractors. We likewise would be bringing in material from different job sites.
I just want to, you, you're moving your business to this location, but is the permit carried to this new location, or how does, I'm not sure how that works.
Whole, whole game.
So maybe you're going to start immediately removing material and trucking it out of there, or are you, are you stockpiling it until everything's done at the site, then your business opens up there?
It's probably going to be a little bit of happening in a concurrent time.
Okay.
That the removal could take a while, but we don't see that as the need to preclude moving our business over there, and starting a wholesale material that we might already have, stockpiled elsewhere, move that in and sell it, or other material, it's not just going to be material dug out of the ground, it's going to be sold.
Through the chair, how does this all work when there isn't even a road yet?
Nah, there is a, good question.
So, I mean, we're, we're involving lots and things like that, there's nothing there.
I know.
We've never done it before. So we're going in a territory that has not been crossed, so normally, as you know, we require a road, hundreds of deals, I know it's on the map, but there's nothing there. So how is this all going to go down?
Bob and Eric, are you going to answer this question?
Bob and Eric, economic development, the road has started, clearing has started.
It starts, but there's no roads.
There will be.
I agree.
If I quit through the chair.
You know what, there is no road.
I was just going to say, I mean, the, the board can easily condition that the road be built to a satisfactory. to a satisfactory point, to binder or whatever the pleasure of the board is. Obviously, we can't access the property until there's physical access to it, so we understand.
I was looking for that in the beginning comments, same effect of what's going on here, because we know what's going on a little bit here, so it should have been maybe said, okay, our intent is we're going to build the road, we're going to base all down before we even start to go in on this property to start doing stuff.
That is the general idea, yes.
Now, that's what I wanted to get out there.
Because you can't start the business until the road.
Exactly. We need to be able to get trucks there.
So we can make it a condition where nothing can be sold or whatever out of that property until the road is accepted and/or to a certain point that is agreed upon.
Bye. Mr. Minari?
Thank you. Through the chair, Ms. Wicker, on point, very good. We, same question came up when we first got the application, it said, I need an answer to this, I've never done it, adding a property on a unbuilt road, on a lot that's not released. So, the contingency would be upon release of the lot, because the road would have to get to a certain binder to a point, and you could contingent upon a lot release granted by the planning board prior to start of operation.
Is that all fine and cool? So long we're all on the same page on what's going to go on, and how's it going to go on, and when it's going to go on, I'm good with it, but we're not just going to go in and blow a two-track to a back property, start digging up dirt and chipping it out on the road. We're going to have some steps going on here where we have an approved park that we want to see built before we start digging in the back property.
You've got to cross the first bridge first.
Right, let's get the road in and stuff like that, and then go ahead and start selling their products or trucking it or whatever.
I mean, that'll reduce the amount of dust and everything. I mean, if you have a road with a binder at least, you don't have a, you know, 200-foot plume of whatever in the air.
That's, that's, and that's why we want it all up.
But it's in the process.
Get it all.
And I imagine you can make it happen, because this is what you guys do.
I mean, the team certainly understands the sense of urgency to get that road.
Oh, yeah.
So erosion controls have been in, our office has staked everything out, trees have, I think clearing started today.
I took her right by.
Yeah, so it's going to move quick.
You're moving right along with it.
Through the chair, I have no problem with conditioning it in and moving forward that way, that's fine with me.
Let's go to Meg, if she has any questions online about the waivers.
I don't.
Thank you.
Through the chair, same thing here, I have no problem with that, as long as we have a full understanding on how, and how it's going to go down, and if everybody's okay with it, I'm fine. The main thing is I don't want a dirt road, don't want a Route 16.
Yeah.
All of the gravel, what it is.
Nope, nope.
Mr. Minari?
Thank you. Just comments on waivers, for the record, I suppose, and a lot of these waivers, they make sense, because usually earth removal is part of a step process to construct a building, or to shape the land and then stop operation. This is a continuous operation, okay, and it's a three-year earth removal permit with extensions, et cetera, but the bond, for one, makes sense to not need the bond, as it's going to be a continuing operation. So I didn't have any concerns with that. I did notice that within 100 feet of existing public way adjacent property line, you made mention in the narrative about the southern portion of the property that's being within 20 feet, how far was it to the western edge?
I'm glad you brought that up, we talked about that briefly the other day, and I should have included that language here. We're about 60 feet at its closest point to the western boundary, and then most of it is greater than that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Item number three, and as you mentioned, it is 100 feet from a wetland, you're looking to get 50 feet, that's where Conservation, obviously we need their feedback on that, and that's, they meet next week, you guys have, you're on their Monday agenda.
Exactly. And critical to the commission is that we maintain a 50-foot buffer, which is exactly what is reflected on the plans.
Okay, I saw you got to 51 feet at one point, you're pretty close.
I like to just provide a little room there for erosion controls, so there are no stories.
Okay. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, my last question was, where you're going to be removing approximately 75% exported topsoil, the remaining 25% is going to be located in one particular spot, or is that the basins?
That's sort of a big picture item, and Tom and I didn't really get a chance to talk that through entirely, but the idea is to not, is to maintain some topsoil on site so it's available to stabilize slopes.
That's what I was thinking.
I will add in that we're obviously in the business of selling loam, we always have a pretty good stock of it, and in the past in restorations on our current site, we have used a, sort of a paper waste product that the board has previously approved, and I think I've gotten great compliments in this board about how well the restorations have been done, and how green they end up being, so we'd probably try to use something like that again. Most likely for the restoration, the smoked restoration areas that would need to be grassed and seeded.
If we can go over some checkpoints for a special permit, traffic flow, all that, you want to give us a rundown of all that?
I don't have the checklist in front of me, but I did include in the narrative.
Yeah, it's basically the bullets that you hit in the narrative.
Yeah, so what's interesting here, most, if not all, of these topics were part of a use special permit, in terms of signage and traffic safety, and social, economic, community needs, all those things. So, for lack of a better way to say it, this largely is a regurgitation of exactly the language that was included in the use special permit. So, from a traffic standpoint, I should have touched on this earlier, that under the earthwork by law, they do require signage, and this came up at the staff meeting the other day. Typically, what you would do is have warning signage for trucks right at the driveway entrance. As discussed with the police chief the other day, it makes more sense to have the signage out at Route 16 at Legacy Circle, so that, you know, the higher speed traffic is warned that trucks are entering.
You'd be warning your own traffic, but.
Yeah, so those, the signage is reflected on the plans, and there's a detail on the detail sheet for the plans. Other than that, in terms of traffic flow and safety, again, a definitive subdivision was issued, site distance was measured, all of those things were discussed, so I believe that no further discussion is needed there.
Social, economic, community needs, served by the proposal?
Yeah, I mean, I think this is only a positive for the town at this point in the community. In terms of tax revenue, I'm not sure what else we can really say about that. I'm not sure if you have any idea what that annual tax revenue would be, but.
It's more than it would be on the current.
It's certainly a positive.
Where we're currently operating is certainly going to be well in excess of what we're currently paying in taxes.
Under number seven, adequacy of utilities, there will be no underground utilities here. The only utility will be an overhead wire to bring power to the site, so no demand on utilities.
And you don't need water, you don't need sewer?
Nope, very simple.
Neighborhood character and social structures?
So one of the reasons this site was selected is because it's very, it's isolated from developed areas for the most part, there's significant wooded buffers around the site. If you look at the grades, it's also being depressed, there's cut slopes, it's going to be lower in elevation, which goes a long way to mitigate sound, so we don't expect issues or impacts to abutting properties. Whether it's appropriate here or not, I think it probably is more appropriate in the next one, but in terms of controlling dust during dry periods, watering trucks will be used, so.
Just neighborhood character, this is zoned industrial?
Correct.
And this is a use that's appropriate in the industrial zone?
Correct, and that was also determined during the use special permit process, and again, it's not visible from adjacent properties, it's only visible from the end of Legacy Circle.
Certainly not from Davis Street or Route 16.
Impacts on the natural environment?
Yeah, I jumped the gun a little bit, so again, in terms of noise and dust, we don't expect any issues dry periods, watering trucks will be used, and again, significant wooded buffers will be maintained around this 12-acre pad. And then, of course, I mentioned stormwater here, because we've implemented a stormwater management system that's in compliance with DEP stormwater management standards. I think we did briefly touch also on the fiscal impact.
Yeah, kind of, it's like a same question almost.
There's a little redundancy there, yeah.
All right. Chair, I've got one more question. When you guys finally get Legacy Circle done, and you're using the lot, Legacy Circle, will you plan on, or can there be some kind of schedule to keep that road swept up, so the stone, the bike, the direct ride isn't getting all onto 16?
Yep.
You know what I mean?
That's actually part of it, when it is going to be a private way at the beginning, and then to the extent we can ever help out, once it's been accepted public, certainly we'd be, try our best to keep it.
Worldwide, by the concrete plant, I'd say once a month, if they have a street button down, to clean the roads up, to keep all the shit from gravel trucks and stone trucks and everything from getting on the road, to keep it all cleaned out nicely.
We try our best to keep all that stuff on the site and limit the amount that comes off.
Mr. Chairman, there was a peer review that we started, and our peer review consultant at McCarty Engineering is unable to join us today, but he did provide a letter that is in your packets, it's a two-sided document, and it's just, if it's good with you, Mr. Chairman, I'd kind of like the applicant to maybe address some of the items that I wrote.
Have you had time to look over it over?
What I have here is a draft, and just from a strategic standpoint, we didn't want to issue this to the board, we wanted to discuss a few of the comments, and we also, again, are going for the commission on Monday evening, so if there's anything there that would affect how we respond to these comments, we kind of wanted to just hold off on that, but we certainly have read through all the comments, and we're confident we can easily address all the comments. I can quickly just run through them, and of course, I'll paraphrase.
Yeah, if we, since the peer review is not here, if we can openly hear what his comments were.
Sure, sure. Comment number one, there was, I pointed it out earlier, there was a little discrepancy on the plans, intermittent versus the perennial stream, that's been corrected, so I responded accordingly. The driveway into lot six shall comply with 6.18 of the subdivision rules and regs.
These were waived.
That was actually waived as part of the definitive subdivision to allow that 24-foot wide access to be gravel.
Both two and three.
Yeah, essentially, three is the same thing, yep. There was a contour labeled wrong, of course, we fixed that. Number five, same thing, they had some questions about the contours, so I've gone through and corrected those, you'll see that on the next iteration of the plans. We have some berms, so in most areas, we're cutting and having swales at the bottom of the slopes, there are a few little areas on the plan where we actually have to fill and berm to make sure that we capture water and swell it around the perimeter of the property. We had a six-inch high berm, because there's very little flow, they requested it to be two feet, I didn't think that was unreasonable, so we made it two feet, just to ensure we have a tall enough berm, if you get a real severe rain event, it doesn't blow through the berm. Number seven, I just did want to clarify this, so they're asking about suggesting that the applicant provide an exhibit depicting the layout of the landscape yard and bins and things of that nature. There will be no such.
There are going to be no bins.
Bins, there'll just be piles of material.
And they're always moving, always changing size, we kind of make room as stuff comes in.
Number eight, in a similar fashion, provide an exhibit depicting the schematic rock-crushing operation, same thing, that will move as dictated, so we don't want to really put something on a plan and be locked down to it, as long as we stay within the work limits, essentially, is what we're proposing, and that's how I responded in my draft. So number nine, I just want to talk about this quickly, this is probably the one that we should spend just a minute on, the three proposed sediment basins are depicted in areas of five to 18-foot cuts in elevation. Essentially, what they're asking is perhaps we should show a schematic as how we're going to phase this out. That's difficult for a couple of reasons, it could take, I don't know how many years, it could take, what, 10 years?
It might be to get to this.
To actually get to that full-blown stage, so rather than us giving you an exact plan of how this is going to be undertaken, we would suggest that perhaps even in the condition or notes on the plan or both, that any areas that are open and excavated be protected, of course, with erosion controls and temporary diversion swales to direct any open soil areas to basins, whether they be temporary basins or the permanent basins that are shown on the plan. I'm happy to put notes to that effect on the plan, and again, if the board feels like they should condition it accordingly, I don't think there's any opposition to that.
Through the chair, yeah, as long as it's controlled, we can condition it that way, that's not a.
I mean, Tom recognizes that if silt is allowed into the wetland, that's not in anybody's best interest, so.
Going on number seven, once the earth removal operations have concluded, you said it's going to be like 10 years until you're at that point?
I don't think it's known.
It's going to be a while.
It's going to be.
Maybe like a condition like once a year, we check in, like get like a layout of what's going on, you know, we don't want to, I don't think we want to be waiting 10 years to hear from you and say, this is the, here's your end product.
Yeah.
A check-in time, figure it out, from the date, whenever this is approved, every year.
Yeah, because it's going to be an ongoing earth removal thing.
Every month, go ahead and do a check-in.
Month, month's a little too much.
No, I mean.
Every year.
Every year on that month.
I would just request that that be done sort of by a drone capture, rather than like a full-on.
Yeah, I think just so in general, like, yeah, here's our site that's.
The site as it goes, here's where, you know, the lower points are.
Right, we're talking about observation versus as-built.
Yeah, you know, and also, yeah, there is no structure there, and it's still all conform into what's going on.
What's nice with the drone thing, all of a sudden, is iris, you know, you know, see that, it's everybody, it's luminous, you know, it's open, so that's good.
And through the chair, or maybe like in three years, some kind of drawing on what's going on, if you go every couple of years with your drone, and then maybe every third year, actual print to know how things are going.
The drones do digital mapping.
Yeah.
Yes.
We do volumes, our piles, yeah.
At times, see it all.
Yeah, we do digital mapping with that.
Pretty cool.
One other thing through the chair. You're not going to cross this dirty dirt here, right?
No.
Do the dirt.
No.
Just bringing it up, the only reason I'm bringing it up is you're saying you're bringing stuff in and sending stuff out, I know at the state, if you're bringing it level this high, you can go, because, as formal as they use.
No, we're pretty judicious about what, where it's coming from, and making sure that it's not coming from somewhere that's contaminated.
I would assume.
We don't want to have the problems that Uxbridge has.
Through the chair, I would assume the commission would have the same question we'd be answering.
Thank you.
Any comments on the peer review?
There's actually a couple more, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, it's.
Yeah, just, and really quickly, the last five are technical stormwater management comments, we've gone through these, we can easily address all of these, so unless you want me to, I won't go through each and every one of them.
Just so they, here we hear, there's a stormwater, yeah, we'll read them off.
Yeah, and again, we'll provide you with written responses to these comments, I just, again, we didn't want to issue it prematurely.
Any other questions? Do you have any to add real quick?
Care to steer from the others.
All right, so this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, concerns? Yeah, just say your name and address, please, for the record.
I'm Beverly Flansburg, I live at 53 Monroe Street, my property above the proposed project.
Okay.
Okay? I've heard a lot of things, but I haven't heard anything about hours of operation. There's going to be a time that this is going to start today, and a time when this is going to end in a day, and how many, is it going to include Saturdays or what?
Great, great. So the general conditions that we offer, we just want to hear the quick rundown of what was going on first, before we get into the nitty-gritty of it. You have a.
I could address that.
Yeah, we could schedule hours, days.
Our regular business hours are seven to five, Monday to Friday, seven to three on Saturdays, closed on Sundays.
Holidays?
Fifty, 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 which ones we're closed on. I don't have the exact schedule off the top of my head.
Major.
For example, we don't do Memorial Day, I don't have it all, but yeah, July 4th, we will be closed. Christmas, yes.
You don't do July 4th, Labor Day, Memorial Day.
Right, right.
It's like most.
I'm sorry, through the chair, we have kind of a boil plate for that, and operations like on Christmas and like Thanksgiving, stuff like that, is usually in there, it's not allowed on major holidays.
Also, you've been in business in town for many years, too, and I'm sure you've never been like an issue one.
No, I will add one thing that, I know this kind of came up when Daphne Concrete was here. Occasionally, we do do work with municipalities and the state taking in asphalt grindings. That's usually night work. And occasionally, we do need to open the gates up to haul in at night, but we don't process materials. We just sort of dump and leave. And the other thing we do is snow plowing the winter and that's unpredictable. And sometimes we need to go get our salt reserves. So that might require going into the site and, you know, operating machine.
So he's saying that it's supposed to be, some days it may not be at five o'clock at night. He might be doing, you say, might be other things, people coming in or other processes or something going on, hauling of stuff out or something. I didn't quite catch what you just said.
If I may respond.
Yeah, just kind of.
Yep. It would be work for municipalities or the town or the state taking in asphalt grindings because that's usually night work. They need a place to put those. And we often put asphalt grinding when they grind up road, the roads.
The grinder or the grindings?
The grindings. They would ground on the road. They truck it to the.
Ma'am, ma'am, time out. Just, you need to talk through me. You're not going to have, you can't have a back and forth dialogue with the applicant. That's fine. Just want to make sure.
And I do as well.
All right. Now I've lost my train of.
Sorry.
Hypothetically, they could be coming into this place perhaps at eight o'clock at night, eight, nine. And what about the people around? I mean, my son's house is not very far from the proposed site. There are houses on the other side of Grand Tech. These would all be affected. I'm sure none of you would like to be sound in your bed at night at 10 o'clock with trucks going in and out pulling gravel or whatever.
It's a ton. And maybe you, it's not an everyday thing. It's.
It's very rare, only when jobs are going on.
Yeah. Do you do that same at the other pit?
Yep. We do that now.
How frequent has that kind of come up?
I don't think we've done it since last summer. And even that was probably only a couple nights for a few weeks. I don't really recall, but it's not, it's not an everyday occurrence. And it's usually only when they're doing roadway construction in that general area. And snow plowing, it's just when it, when it snows, we can't control.
Sound, is there going to be any kind of sound barrier between you and the house? I know, is there a sound study that's been made or talked about, anything like that?
There isn't. I will add that the, as discussed by Mike, area will be depressed. There will also be a bunch of piles there. That goes a long way to mitigating the noise. I'm not in the interest of, you know, being a bad neighbor. If there's things that we can do to mitigate, I'll put trees up there, arboristies. I will add that the nearest house from the western lot line is about 800 feet away.
Actually more.
Yeah, more. Yeah, that's, that's correct. And that's from the western lot line and through woods. And that is wetland as well. So it's not like anything could go there.
Through the chair, so you're saying about 800 feet, thousand, what is, where is Mrs. Flansburg? How far away?
Through the chair, it's about, I looked just today, I looked at Google Earth and measured. It's about 1,000 feet from the nearest activity on the site.
It's like a fifth of a mile.
To the nearest, right. And it's, as Tom just stated, it's densely wooded, it's wetland. So it will always be there. There'll always be a wooded buffer there.
And I will add, I don't know who's going to end up on lots one through four. I don't know what projects might be proposed there. There could be warehouses that would be 24/7. The site is an industrial subdivision. I don't know what those hours would be. I don't, that's not my, those aren't my lots. So I don't know what's going to go on there. But it is an industrial subdivision near Route 16.
I'm going to show my ignorance. When you talk about the western.
Ma'am, ma'am, we're running the meeting, okay? You can't just start talking out loud and answering, asking questions as you please, okay? I'm going to be running the meeting, not you.
I don't intend to. I'm sorry.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're on the same page. Board, any responses with that?
I think that's a suitable buffer zone.
Mrs. Flansburg?
It's every day.
Question?
Yes. My next major concern is traffic. When they come out of that area and they're on Route 16, how are they going to proceed on 16? Or are they going to be looking for shortcuts like Monroe Street and come out on West Hartford Ave or someplace like that? Monroe Street, as you all know, is a very small street. It's not very wide. When a school bus goes through, it makes it difficult. The road is in very poor condition on the Youngs cutoff section. People are often walking their dogs. There are no sidewalks. There are kids that ride their bikes, no sidewalks. There's a lot of foot traffic and I don't think it would be advisable to be having trucks going up and down that road carrying load from ground in and out.
I highly doubt they're going to target Monroe Street as a route and even Young Street, that's very tough. But I'll let you answer if you have a plan of traffic routes and directions where you're going to be going off the site.
Our trucks have no interest in going down Monroe Street. It's somewhat impassable to bigger trucks, in my opinion. If we needed to get to West Hartford, we would go out to 146 or use West Street or depending on where. But as for where we would go coming off of 16, our trucks, they're going to do wherever the deliveries are. The other part is I can't control the customers' trucks that are coming to us. But I can't imagine anyone would want to make use of Monroe Street in a truck. But I know my trucks wouldn't, but that's the really extent of what I can control.
Anyone else in the audience with any questions with this? Anyone online have any questions with this applicant?
I may just make.
I just want to make sure, I just want to give everyone a fair shot at asking some questions if there's others out there. Anyone online? Another question?
Yeah. Mr. McIntyre talked about rock crush crushing and that there was a buffer of woodland. If you've ever heard a rock crushing machine, it makes a heck of a lot of noise. And I don't know if those trees are going to be sufficient to block that noise.
So there's a concern of noise coming from the site? Any?
Respectfully, I don't think it will be heard at that distance. I've, when we crush, I've, I've checked similar sites to the extent they're similar. And I've done some basic decibel readings on my own. And if, I mean, if you really listen for it, you might hear it, but it's not going to interfere with your ordinary daily activities. I don't think it would be heard at that distance.
Maybe there's a, maybe there's a way we can come up with something to monitor as we go. I don't know. Do you have any ideas from your experience with what we could do to make sure the sound is appropriate and?
I do, Mr. Chairman. I was speaking with the town administrator today earlier about this project. And with, with noise for an operation like this, the best way to measure it is once it's happening. So one of the ways that we thought might be the best way to do this was to have, you know, measuring instances throughout the first year of operation or so. Maybe have a bond for a certain amount, I don't know, 20,000 or something, some amount agreeable with the butter, excuse me, with the developer, that would provide funds if in fact more trees need to be planted or some sort of buffer needed to be reinforced in some regard, assuming that this noise study produced any sort of results that exceeded the DEP standards for noise regulation. I figured that might be the best way to do it because any study done in advance is theoretical as opposed to what's operating out in the field. So that was my suggestion.
Sounds like a good game plan for you.
Have any general opposition to that?
So it's something we can work out in a possible decision or go from there. So did you, did you hear that? We're going to come up with a plan to maybe, if this is approved, to fall, to monitor the noise for, you know, a year or so and work between the town and the developer. If it's approved, to monitor the noise and make sure it is up to DEP standards.
I did hear say perhaps a bond would be issued, would be asked for. Would that be, I understand way back when, that was one of the waivers, that they did not have to supply a bond. Would this new bond be affected by that previous waiver, if you follow me?
Mr. Chairman, through the chair to Ms. Flansburg, great question. This would be a separate bond. The one that's required is for, under the regulation, is to return the site and re-vegetate and stabilize the property, et cetera. But this would be a separate bond just for performance-based, for a noise study only. So it is separate from that regulation.
Through the chair, I'd like to ask a question. We're all learning all the time. So DP has standards, right? And they're set. And this is an industrial zone, right? And this is an allowed use in the industrial zone?
By special permit.
By special permit. All right. That was pretty much my question. Just, but there are standards out there. Okay, thank you.
And the, and the current, monitoring for a year helps because say we approve this, then it might not be rock crushing for another eight to a year. So we got to, you know, they're still getting into the site first. So, you know, a year is a good, good solution for that.
Right. Two summers.
Yeah. Mr. Man Eric?
Yep. Bob and Eric, I'm not developing through the chair. I was in the meeting with Mr. Benoit, with the town administrator this morning. And we first have to establish a, the initial sound study, what's there right now. There's a lot of truck traffic on Route 146 and there's a lot of truck traffic on Davis Street that exists right now, which will probably establish the baseline noise. And then you measure your DEP standards from there, whether or not there's an increase. So it's not perfectly quiet in the woods right now. If you stand on that property, you do hear what Route 146 and the truck traffic on Davis Street. That has to be recorded.
Through the chair, question piggybacking there on the work that we've done along other towns. It's pretty public knowledge. We'll probably have north of 3 million square feet of distribution centers.
Not far from this.
Not far from this, on 146 and all around Gabora and Lackey Dam Road and, you know, thousands of truck stops a week when it's all open. So that's going to exacerbate sound also from different directions. So, you know, obviously, this is a direction, but not all of the direction comes from.
I've walked that site many a time. And if you're close to Davis Street near Gran Ute, a truck goes by, your feet are vibrating with the vibrations.
Okay, thank you.
So there is a, you have to establish a baseline first. It's not just butterflies and birds out there right now.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the audience? All right. Anyone online? Comments, questions?
Nope.
All right. So my next steps would be.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So because of the, at least the one item and the, well, a couple of things. Number one, the waiver to operate within 100 feet of the wetland boundary. I think it's important to know how the Conservation Commission is going to react to that before this board were to take any position on it. I also understand that there's some modifications need to be made to the plans because of the ORED that was issued. We have a meeting next week and Conservation meets on Monday. I feel this might be an opportunity for us to put together a draft decision with the items that we've discussed here today and let the applicant have the opportunity to button up those final items with the commission and then come back to us on Thursday.
And button up with peer review as well.
Of course.
Excuse me, including, Chair, the topics tonight that have been.
Absolutely.
Added and sort of.
Flushed out.
Accepted and flushed out. Things should be all.
So we need a, need a motion to continue the public hearing to June 30th?
Yes, sir.
Be the way to go early?
Yes.
What time?
We only have one, it's on Douglas. Yeah, it's 7:15 should be fine.
7:15?
Mr. Chair, if I could, I apologize to interject, but just, just so everybody understands, we do hope to have a meeting on Monday with the commission.
Yeah.
But we haven't received a DEP file number yet.
Right.
And comments. So in the absence of that, we're not going to make a lot of, we'll still meet with the commission. They're willing to open the meeting and we can hear their concerns, to your point, which is great. But we may not be able to just, you know, sail through that process. We're hoping we can.
Well, at least hear their concerns.
On the agenda?
We do.
So then the motion would be to continue the public hearing to June 30th at 7:15 PM?
May I suggest 7:05 in case the first one moves quickly?
7:05, that should be fine.
7:05.
Thank you.
Friendly.
It's only a 15-minute implement, so I have to worry.
So is that your motion?
That's my motion.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Wickers, seconded by Mr. Marks. Roll call vote. Any further discussion? Roll call vote to continue to the 30th at 7:05.
So crafty, eh?
Ready, Marks, yes?
Thank you.
Mike, right.
Mike, it's Wicker, right?
Thanks, Les, and I.
Thank you.
We appreciate your time. Thank you.
Next Thursday, the 30th?
7:05, okay.
We'll be back here.
My ears are not the best. I appreciate that. Your favorite person, Jeremy, would love to see these.
We like you. We like you.
Next item on the agenda, public hearing, Pine, Sand and Stone, Bedonian Sand and Gravel, application for earth removal permit ER-220531, One Lackey Dam Road, possible votes. Let me just open this little paper. Oh, this paper.
Can you light it from high?
It's going to be one side. I just got to open it up. Town of Douglas Plan and Board Notice of Public Hearing in accordance with Master on Laws, Chapter 40A, in the Town of Douglas Earth Removal Zone bylaws, Section 6.1 and 9.3, the plan and board will hold a public hearing on the application of owners, Pine Sand and Stone Incorporated and Bedonian Sand and Gravel LLC for an earth removal special permit for property located at One Lackey Dam Road, Douglas, Massachusetts, Assesses Map 115, Parcels 1, 2, 3, 5 and 8, as shown on a plan entitled Earth Removal Plan of Land dated May 5, 2022, by Garrary and Halman Incorporated, 1029 Providence Road, Williamsville, Massachusetts, 01588, consisting of 16 plus or minus acres. The public hearing will be held Thursday, June 23 at 7:15 PM in the Municipal Center Community Meeting Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Massachusetts. A copy of this middle is available for viewing in the Community Development Department during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place designated. Public hearing is now open. Oh, someone new up there.
For the record, John Federigo with Garrary and Halman.
Can you speak up a little bit louder?
Sorry. For the record, John Federigo with Garrary and Halman, representing Pine, Sand and Gravel. With me tonight is Andy Leonard and also on Zoom, Murray Burstola, who run Pine's gravel operation. For this site, we have existing, ongoing gravel operation. Last time a permit was filed for it was way back in 2018. And then as of last year, we did request another extension for the project. At this point, we're getting very close to nearing final rates for both groundwater and for final site build-out that would be in conjunction with a previously approved industrial road. So we just wanted to come in to request a new earth removal permit that would allow us to get everything down to a build-out portion. Because I, the earth removal bylaw does require for 10 acres, we did split up the project into two separate phases for it. Both of those would be under the 10 acre requirement. So I hope that that wouldn't be anything there regarding that portion. And then we would also be seeking out a waiver request for the 100-foot step back to a property line. I do know that we do have the Douglas Town Line with Uxbridge in this location here. So I'm not too sure if that requirement would apply there. But primarily, we do have a small portion of earthwork that will be occurring near the Gilboa Lackey Dam intersection. With regards to everything out here, we are trying to blend everything into existing conditions. So essentially, we are coming from Pine's existing driveway area as well as from just outside of that right-of-way edge and carrying slopes back up through the site at 2.1, or sorry, 2%. And then in phase two, we start to step it up a little bit more and backs out at 10% for our slopes there. Everything after all the work has been done would be intended to be restored. I do know that they have been working and keeping various. I do know that they have been working and keeping various loom piles on site to disperse as needed, but that would be something that would not be intended to be left open or anything along those lines. We do have erosion control proposed around the whole entire site. All of our work right now along this edge of the property would be essentially maintained with the current erosion control, as well as outside of any sort of riverfront area or 100-foot wetland stepbacks. Should the project ever get to a point where there'll be installing the industrial road, if anything needs to be filed with Conservation at that point, obviously, that portion will go through to do it, but really, we're just looking just on the earth removal side, just to get us down a little bit further. We did do recent monitoring wells as of May, and in several areas that we checked, we will not be anywhere closer than 10 feet for groundwater separation, so we do meet any requirements there for it, and pretty much, we're just looking to kind of get a little bit lower from what our previous grades were. The last permit that we had went down to an elevation within this area here of about 356. Overall, our lowest portion through this area now would be around like a 352 or so, so not too much change would be occurring there. And then, obviously, we do get the town's approval for things. We would be going in front of Uxbridge as well, just to make sure that everything is compliant with that. But at least that's just kind of an initial overview. As far as anything condition-wise goes, bond related, anything that's currently ongoing, we would just like to have that carried over to the new permit, not looking to make any significant changes from anything that's been going on the last, you know, 20-some-odd years out there.
Mr. Benoit? Oh, you want to add something?
Yeah, Andy from Pine. So one of the things that's really happening here is we're not really expanding horizontally, we're going down to the proposed road group. So we're, we are increasing our footprint a little bit, I couldn't tell you the percent, but mostly it's down.
And with regards to that footprint, previously, we were permitted, I think it was just over 11 and a half acres, maybe a little bit closer to 12 acres there. That line might have been defined somewhere through this area. As far as our work goes, it might be a little bit further back into the site, but as far as it goes, all work would be several hundred feet away from any residential butter. Closest of butters would be off of Gilboa Court. Everything that's on this side is either going to be 146 or, you know, like the gas station or various industrial stuff there, so we don't really have any concerns with, you know, butters or anybody else on that end for it.
One thing, Mr. Chair, where you're getting down to the end, do you have the approved plan for the industrial park? Are you trying to match that plan to where you're digging it? Because there's been an approved plan years ago. The road and the layout and everything, so that what you're doing is going to match what's already been all approved?
No.
You know what I'm saying? You're going down, you might be able to go down a little bit more, I'm not sure what all the exact details were, I can't remember that.
That was before my time.
Yeah, so if you have that overlay going in with this here, where you're coming to the end, another road's coming in down here in the bottom, but, so that when you're digging, if you're going, I mean, make sure that it's what's been approved.
So to answer that question, that road, that proposed roadway, I believe goes right through here?
Yes.
So we purposely stayed away from that because you get into conservation issues, but other than that, these grades here mimic the road.
And I do have a copy of the last approved plan here. I can always have a copy updated for the board if they would like to see it, but this portion through here is where that proposed road was. And again, we are essentially holding currently this line right now as what our proposed limit of work would be, and then, once they do get in there and start developing that road, it's just a matter of cutting down a little bit more and being able to blend everything in there.
The other thing, when we receive an earth removal from the board of Douglas, we will, we've already talked about Uxbridge, we'll get the Uxbridge earth removal, but our intent is not to open that up to the road. We'll always leave a buffer there. We'll always leave a buffer, and if this property were to be developed, they can.
Then you have a buffer to.
Yeah, they can take that out, and then they'd also take this bit out for the road.
Okay. That would be just through the chair, one cool thing to have, and I know I saw that little bit you had there, but finding that print that's been approved would be great to have it as an overlay as far as what you got going on here. When you're in the pit, getting a little bit better, we're coming to the tail end, as you know, of everything that's already been all set up, it'd be cool to see that overlay, like saying.
At least it all matched.
Already all done, read, and this is where we're at now, so that we all know, okay, awesome, then we got 30 feet to cut and it's done it all the way. That would be an awesome thing to have.
Mr. Sokrath?
Good point. Question, because I haven't been on this board in four years. What is this road, and how many total acres are in control by the McIntyre group?
Different entity.
They're different entities?
This is Pine, so.
I didn't mean McIntyre, it was a mislip, Pine.
So there's the Pine property, Mary Bedoin who's present, the DeVries family, and a little bit of the Vecchione family.
How many total acres?
220.
Wow. And so this road, what is that, when you talk about roads?
So I think in 2010, 12?
No, yeah, at least.
2012, I don't know.
Collaborative.
Ernie may know, but there was a collaborative group of towns.
It was the five town committee.
And they designed a road called the West Side Connector that ran through the property. So that'll, to some degree, that would be utilized for future.
Open up the property for the future, it's all industrial.
Yeah. If I may, through the chair, the original intent was to connect this road up to Waitons Road, where the industrial park already is in Sutton. But the problem they ran into is they found an Indian burial ground on the Sutton side, so that would go all the way through. They took the barn down and everything over there on Waitons Road where the road was going to come out, and that got kiboshed. So right now, then, the only way in is right here to that property, where it was going to be a through from one side to the Sutton side, and Sutton side, and there industrial park, all connected one street.
Sounds like a casino.
Let's reel it back in and look at what's in front of us today.
That's what it's about.
All right, Mr. Benoit, any comments?
General comments, really, I mean, completely different from the project we just reviewed, this is existing, right? We're not talking about starting a site from scratch. I like the idea of, it sounds like you're looking at just kind of transport the conditions of approval from the original earth permit to this, just with the updated plan, and any other comments you get here tonight from butters and board members and such, and by, it's a waiver-free application, you know, everything meets the conformity of the removal. Aside from having sent this out for peer review, which we just got a word program for, just awaiting the peer review, just for the little things.
We have a peer review picked out already.
No, just don't have the response yet, so.
Okay.
But other than that, I don't have any issues with this.
So this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience or online with any comments, questions? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Marjorie Hutney, and I own a piece of property adjacent to this on North Street.
What number, North Street?
101103 North. It is the end of the gravel test, and I just wanted to know how far they were going to dig from my property line, how far they were going to dig, and if they're going to slope it off.
Good question.
So with regards to your property on North Street, unfortunately, I don't have a large enough view to show everything, but right now, for the phase that we're looking at, it would be essentially stopping just outside or just into, I don't know how you want to refer to that, the current Pine portion. Everything would be contained essentially outside of that wetland area, so nothing closer to where your portion of the property would be.
So I would have a good buffer?
Yes, yes.
Do you have an estimate of distance between the?
I would have to say, and Andy, maybe you might know a little more, at least 500 feet, I would think.
I think much more than that, so through the chair, this is not changing anything than what you see now or have heard, or it's in the same basic footprint, so what you have now is what you got.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. That was it?
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience with a question, comment, or anyone online with a question, comment? Meg, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
All right, so we'll be waiting for peer review and.
All right, so in the absence of an extra July meeting at this time, I'd recommend we continue just to the next meeting, because at the next meeting, depending on how other things go, we may adjust our July schedule. I don't know if we'll have peer review back in a week's time, but.
At least check in and.
Exactly, because we might be looking at adjusting our July to having a meeting on the 14th to the 7th, I don't know yet, and we're not going to know until then, so just continue to the next meeting and see how things go.
Does that work for you? Let's do 7:15 for the 30th?
I wish. What day do you got to go on?
Thursday, the 30th?
Just next Thursday?
Yeah.
So, just an observation, so we were on 7:15 tonight, so that means.
I mean.
That's a plan and board, 7:15.
Other than what, to the chair, other than what we're doing tonight with all these things that we're transferring to the 30th, I don't think we should be taking in anything else other than the issues we're handling right now.
Yeah, no, yeah, I would.
Nothing else on the agenda except what we're trying to hash out and get done for this meeting into the 30th.
Can't keep piling it on and.
Yeah, we don't want to pile anything else on, anything else should go to.
So no A and Rs, no extensions?
A and Rs have a shelf life of 21 days, so if we do get one, and we did get one today, that will be on our agenda next week.
So what are you talking, the full schedule for the, and the July meeting?
Nope, the 30th is coming.
The 30th, the June?
And then we'll decide on that meeting date.
Continue what it needs.
Because we're not sure what our July meeting date's going to be yet. One of the things that's complicated for us is on the 28th, I'm not going to be here, so.
Good with you, Andy?
So, next week for now.
Whatever, this week?
So we can, yeah.
It works. I mean, basically, I.
Yeah, we're just waiting for a peer review, so if it comes in, it comes in, if it doesn't. All right, entertain a motion to continue to June 30th at 7:15.
So move it, second.
Motion made by Mr. Zwickers, seconded by Mr. Sokrath. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Aaron Sokrath, aye.
Tony Marks, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Zwicker, aye.
Thanks, Les, and I.
Thank you.
We'll see you at 9 o'clock.
Should have taken me off, Mark.
Of course, the next place on the agenda will open.
All right, next on the agenda. I think that's going to be Bondarly's Bella Woods, so take that right now.
Yes. Yes, gentleman is here, the owner, developer of the Bella Woods, so before I get into it, I'm sure you want to introduce.
My name's John Cosma, here for a release of the bond on that property.
So, Mr. Chairman, what we have in our packets, actually, kind of general history here, this is a residential compound, it's a private way. This project was, and it's just unique to me only because I've only been here for so long, but this isn't like a fully vetted public way with striping and sidewalks and all that, this was, this had its certain standards that Mr. Cosma has constructed, and we sent out Leonard Engineering, who had been doing his periodic reviews throughout the lifespan of the project, and has a letter dated June 17 explaining that he feels that this, that the road was built in accordance with the plan. The only thing missing is an as-built plan, for our records, and the other items I wanted to double check on was that the homeowners association was recorded and established, and it was, in 2018. So everything seems to be in order here, we've had our peer review consultant give its final review. My recommendation at this time would be for the board to make a motion, pending questions, of course, make a motion to release the bond for $69,000 and release the remaining lots.
69,000?
Yes, and release the remaining lots pending receipt of the as-built plan.
Yes, yes, I concur with that.
Any comments, questions, concerns with this? Meg, do you have anything?
Oh, I'm good.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to release the $69,000 bond pending the as-built and the release of the remaining lots, correct?
Don't move.
Motion made by Mr. Marks, seconded by Mr. Greco. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, roll call vote.
Aaron Sokrath, aye.
Tony Marks, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Zwicker, aye.
Thanks, Les, and I.
Glad you stayed.
Great, thank you very much.
It's a long one.
Quick and easy, thank you. Thanks for your patience.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda.
Nice job with the project, by the way.
Reorganization, we are missing Mrs. Sharkey, so we will pass that off to the next meeting, unfortunately, it's not a few meetings, we've got to pass that off, but we did be, so see, open meeting law, Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022 expires July 15, 2022.
Slide up to down that, that's the Zoom requirement, alternative means of communicating because of COVID-19, that does expire on July 15. My opinion is that I feel that Zoom is very helpful, I believe it was a step forward for municipalities across Commonwealth. You get more participation, even when folks, and in our particular case, we have one TV, and when an applicant is here on a laptop, he can pull this plan up on the screen for not only the folks at home to see, but for us to see as well. So the selectmen make this determination, whether or not we're going to keep it or not. I was just, wanted to pull the board to see if you want to make a recommendation to selectmen as to whether or not we keep it or not.
Terrific. I have no problem with that, I mean, it makes it great for our peer review, it's great if we need town council, makes it great when we need experts that can tap in or lock projects when people are in Ohio, Illinois, or whatever.
Or tri-towns.
Or tri-towns, so true. I think until they get a TV in the small room or whatever, why not? I mean, it's a new era.
Yeah, that's, it sounds like we have support of that continuing.
One thing, as long as we pay the bill or whatever, 40 minutes, I think we're going to be good.
That was awful.
Do we need a motion on that to endorse that support?
Just to recommend.
Okay, general consensus?
Yeah.
Okay, I think we have that.
Cool.
All right.
I didn't hear any opposition, so I will put a letter together, thank you.
All right, D, CMR PC delegate nomination. It's something I could do, but I have a very busy year ahead of me.
Want to have the full board before we decide on that, more of the reorganization?
To be honest with you, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Sharkey expressed last time that she was not interested in this, so the rest of us are here.
What did she say?
She was not interested in being the delegate, in fact, she made mention that it's usually reserved for the newer members.
I have a child that's going to be born very soon, so I have a very busy schedule. If anyone else is willing to do it, I can.
Does Meg want to do it, the new member?
I am, I would be delighted to do it.
All right. Motion?
No.
No, or is it just kind of, all right.
It'd be nice to have a motion.
All right, entertain a motion to have Meg Schlesman be the CMR PC delegate for the Town of Douglas Plan and Board.
So move it. I'll second that.
Motion made by Mr. Marks, seconded by Mr. Zwicker. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Aaron Sokrath, aye.
Tony Marks, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Zwicker, aye.
Thank you, Meg.
Thank you, Meg.
All right, unanimous, thank you, my God.
They're going to go with people, they really are, they're awesome.
They'll send some emails and.
It's through the chair, to piggyback that, I think we should just get this out of the way, put it up. I'm just going to say.
We're getting, we're going to get to you.
The town, well, just.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Board have any issues with moving to number eight right now miscellaneous?
Any issues?
All right, seeing as none. We'll get back to it, we'll get back.
We're talking to eight.
We're not adjourning.
Eight, where are they? Over here.
Second page.
So, just piggybacking on the request for delegate for CMR PC, a group of us went out to the annual meeting, and we received a, this was out of the public house, out of the service, and it was myself, it was Ernie, Mike Zwicker, and Jake, and Bob.
And Mr. Minar.
And Bob Minar was there with us, and we received, and there are pictures to prove it, an award from CMR PC for the Responsible Regionalism Award of 2022 in regards to our tri-town partnership with Sutton and...
Operation.
And this is it for the public, and you can see it's real, and it'll probably be up some office somewhere, but I'm going to leave it here.
We are office.
Where's it go?
Well, we'll put it in the...
Right up here.
Trinity Development Office.
Trinity Development, yeah.
You can put it in this room, it'll be on display at every meeting.
So, there it is.
We'll find a spot.
Thank you, it was a wonderful event.
Thank you to CMR PC for all their help.
And I never had candy as, candy was appetizing.
I mean, also, also the representatives from Oxford Jans Sutton were also there, they also received the award, so the tri-town...
It was a good dinner, good meeting, good award presentation.
It was a very nice party.
Back to additional business, E, associate member applications. Mr. Benoit?
So, we ran out of time because of our 40-minute time limit, snafu at our last meeting when we were discussing these applications, so we do have two apps, one for Mr. Richard Preston, resident of Douglas for some time, has been on the planning board before, I think he served as chair at some point.
He actually chaired for a couple of years.
Right, interested in being associate member here, and I, he's 36-year resident. I recommend favorably that the board consider nominating him for the associate member spot. The second application we have, this is from Mr. Joseph Fitzpatrick, actually got this one earlier in the year, and I spoke with him at the time, and the interest with the planning board assuredly, one of my concerns is we have six members on conservation, which is an even number, and I'd love to make that an odd number, given we have two applications and we can fill one person in each spot, I would, I would really like to do that. So, I talked to Mr. Fitzpatrick about joining conservation, and he did express interest. So, it's not our call to make, so to speak, it's the selectmen, but we'd be looking for a motion to recommend favorably in either direction, as the board sees fit.
At one time, we did have two associates, then we went down to one. And then we went down to a word none, so we have had them in the past, and it's worked out great where if they attend all the meetings, they can become a voting part on a certain project.
Absolutely.
Can make a big difference.
What's good about it is that if there's a supermajority needed, like a special permit or something like that, if that person attends all the meetings and somebody misses one, or isn't there that night that the voting is taking place, then that person can be the significant change.
I think there's, yeah, there's a pressing need for that motion to be filled, so...
Can I ask that through the chair? The intent is, though, for an associate member is to go to all the meetings.
Of course, yes.
Because it would not be useful if they're missing, out of four meetings, they're missing one and then, you know, whatever, so you have to make it up.
Yeah, that's the intent, yes.
Right, right.
So, Mr. Fitzpatrick is fine doing conservation, or, you know... But Mr. Preston definitely seems interested in doing planning board, and his past experience would be a great benefit as well.
Yeah, Richard was on the board before, he served as chairman for a while, he was also the moderator for the, for the town meetings.
He's, I believe he was also a selectman.
Knowledgeable in this area.
What's his name?
Richard Preston.
That would be fantastic.
A long time ago, he was moderator.
Yeah, you remember him being moderator, yeah.
No, I know, I...
Oh, you don't?
It's always been, since I've been here, it's...
Keith?
It's his face. Forgot his name, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll be looking for a motion to...
Richard was before him.
Endorse?
To endorse positive appointments.
Recommend favorably.
Yes.
The appointment of...
Recommend favorably the appointment of the individuals as applied.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion made by Mrs. Zwicker, second by Mr. Marks. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote.
Aaron Socrate, aye.
Tony Marks, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Socrate, aye.
H plus nine.
All right, next F, accessory apartment extension 64 Birch Street. Everything match up, Mr. Benoit, on checklist for this?
Yes, sir, the standard extension, same tenant.
I'll entertain a motion to endorse the application for accessory extension for 64 Birch Street.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Marks, second by Mr. Socrate. Any further discussion? Seen as none, roll call, vote.
Aaron Socrate, aye.
Tony Marks, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Socrate, aye.
H plus nine.
All right, that's all set. Second accessory extension, 74 Pawn Street, Pawn Street. Checklist, Mr. Benoit?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, same, same situation, same tenant, meets all the criteria.
I'll entertain a motion to endorse the accessory apartment extension for 74 Pawn Street.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Marks, second by Mr. Socrate. Any further discussion? Seen as none, roll call, vote.
Roll call, vote.
Oh, Aaron Socrate, I was reading, thinking about, this could be an apartment. 2B, they wrote yes, is that typical? I don't want to put it...
Which one you looking at?
I want to put a fly, but they just put no. Says, in the alternative, the accessory apartment shall be rented at a price affordable persons. They put yes.
I didn't know that was allowed.
Affordable persons?
Yeah.
You can just do that? I mean, it's, I want to...
But that's, that's part of the 40B, attaining a 10%...
It doesn't necessarily have to be strictly a...
There's a lot, yeah, there's a lot of investigation and a lot of...
Why do some people say no, and then some people say...
Because they probably wouldn't consider that, they probably wouldn't consider that.
Okay, so it's something that they would consider, but it's under certain guidelines.
Right, exactly.
All right, so Aaron Socrate, aye.
Yep. Tony Marks, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Socrate, aye.
H plus nine.
All right, that one's all set. I haven't had a second to look at any minutes, so I would have no issue with taking that up at the next meeting, which I'm not going to be, so maybe do that 30th or, I don't know, we didn't want to throw any more on there, so maybe the next meeting?
Yeah. Do you want to do one that's March 24th, and it's like...
I still have some other things on the agenda.
All right.
We'd be happy to do the minutes.
You have them all?
Yeah, let's tackle this agenda, getting a little late.
Yeah, I still have a couple of things on there.
March 24th meeting minutes?
Oh, shit, how did we get to that?
I'm running right through this.
We're going to take them home, we're going to...
Yeah, take them, I haven't, I haven't read them at all.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to do them next meeting.
How are we making out of our bounds?
I do have something, if you want.
Glad you asked, we're going to get to that.
Okay, good.
So, ongoing development, we're in, is it?
Yes.
Okay.
We talked about well and solar. Sorry, there was an item on here for Sleepy Hollow subdivision, but that's going to be tabled too in a future meeting. I was going to bring up 93 Davis Street, but I'll wait for you, Mr. Zwicker.
Staff updates?
Yeah, no staff updates at this time. But 7A lot release. So, a attorney brought to our attention a title defect at the Sleepy Hollow subdivision. Someone was purchasing a property and found that our original document that was a lot release for all of the lots actually referenced the wrong book and page instead of referencing the original covenant, and it referenced the recorded decision. So, the sale wasn't able to finalize until a corrective document had been submitted. I saw this as an opportunity not only to address that issue for Lot 10, but the attorney involved, I asked him, well, could you give a encompassing document that would correct all of the issues? So, essentially replaces the original lot release 2018 with this new one, accomplishes the same thing, but it just references the right book and page so that there's no title defect moving forward for the sale of any of those lots moving forward. So, it's just something that we'd motion to approve or endorse, I suppose, but it's really just a corrective document. I was interested to see it come up in the first place, but it was a minor defect, but it had to be corrected at the registry in order to eliminate the title defect. So, we've got a motion to sign, be everybody's, so...
Need a motion, or just the signatures are fine?
The signature's probably good unless anyone has a objection, I guess.
See an issue with fixing technical, little...
That's all it does. Happy to answer questions about it, but...
So, you're looking for a motion to endorse, or...
It's almost like a re-signature, so I don't really know how to motion that. It's a corrective document, so...
Maybe a motion to support the corrective document for Sleepy Hollow?
Right, yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
So, second.
All right, motion made by Mr. Marks, second by Mrs. Zwicker. Any further discussion? Seen as none, roll call, vote.
Aaron Socrate, aye.
Tony Marks, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Socrate, aye.
H plus nine.
All set on that?
I saved 93 Davis for Mr. Zwicker. We, Mrs. Zwicker and I have been talking about this one, so as you, as you guys know, 93 Davis Capital Cannabis has a parking lot that they hadn't finished, and Mrs. Zwicker asked me, I think back in November, like, what's going on, what happened? So, the owner gave us a letter from a paving company that said we're going to get started on this in April and May, and lo and behold, it's not done. So, what we did learn is that the applicant is intending on applying for a special permit for a drive-through, and until that application comes in, their reason for not doing the parking lot is pending that application, and if there's going to be changes, that's the reason I got. So, the question was asked, that is the report I am giving, I think we'll be anticipating a special permit application in the near future, but, and that's, that's all the information, really.
And the Kent to the chair, this is mud in our face. We look like a bunch of fools and everybody's just laughing at us. We've requested and asked about this in the fall, and we're understanding. We're given a letter of a definite date with the contract up, not a word, not nothing, it's just blown off, and we're left here doing absolutely nothing about it. I mentioned this over a year ago, I knew this was going to happen, and here we are now. It's not right, we're having conditions laid out and everything else, and now this. I want to know what we can do. Drive-through window has nothing to do with completing what was originally planned and signed off on over a year ago, and here we are, and we're kind of being told I can do whatever I want to do, and that's the end of it.
Yeah, because we originally were, gave them a, you know, we didn't do the top coat because the winter, so we're, yeah, we'll, we'll pass it off, we'll, you know, but I probably would rather see, you know, a project get finished as presented.
I want to know what actually we can do to hold it to the grindstone, really, I'd like to see town council involved in this, on what our next move is, whether we go to the selectmen and ask them to pull the license until completion of the original deal with the planning board, or go to the cannabis commission saying that it's in operation, but yet they have not finished what was agreed upon in the original agreement, because this, this is not the way to be doing business in this town where we're being told one thing, it's not getting done, and then we have no recourse and what to do.
We have recourse, but I'm not sure that going to the extreme of reporting her to the cannabis commission because there isn't a top coat on the driveway or pulling her license is, is that...
Then what are we going to do?
I would say we send her a letter and ask her when she intends to...
You just, you just answered that.
Did she reply?
Yeah, the reply being, we're just going to apply for a special permit for a drive-through.
So, I don't want a top coat?
Maybe, so, so she indicated all that, she was going to initiate the top coat at the same time she was applying for the drive-through?
The reason was that we didn't initiate the top coat because we're going to be applying for a drive-through, so we didn't want to pave it and then have to change it.
Okay.
That was...
I heard, I heard, yeah, I heard the same thing, she was applying for a drive-through, and she definitely threw us in, like, saw that.
Sorry, those two ones.
Building Commissioner, maybe he has some answers on...
I think, per Mr. Zwicker's point, I think it might be decent, or at least a good idea for the board to consider requesting a opinion from town council, just to see what our options are.
I'd be fine with that, just at least get some options and have them look it over and give us some answers and...
And I think going down the road in the future, we need to have stuff written in all these deals, when this happens, there's going to be a definite... Because this is a small project, you got a million square foot warehouse, and they say, oh, we're not going to just do it.
Right.
What are we going to be doing here?
We don't, we don't set precedence.
The thing is that's...
Planning board does not set precedence.
I know that, but what I'm getting at is, then why are we all meeting here? We're doing a layout with involvement and everything else, and then we're being ignored.
Yeah, I, I think we should, you know...
Yeah, I think we should, we all agree that we got to look and...
We want to know what she's going to do, but I'm not up for closing, closing her down over a top coat or shutting her business down. I'd like to see something done, and, and I'd like to see her include the, if she's coming in for a drive-through, include that in with the top, the top coat for the whole area at the same time, so...
We might even ask for a bond at that point.
It's been held off too long, and it hasn't been done, so it needs to be done.
You know, once you do that, I think they have to take up to three years before they do that, so that's going to be a total four, five years without top coat.
I mean, she's, she's, I think her thought is, you know, she's planning to do these extensions to the business for the drive-through and stuff like that and lump it all into one action, but I don't know that for sure, I'm just thinking that's the way she's thinking, and, but it should be a response, we should get a response on what, what her timeline is.
We are, we're given a level.
I like both your ideas, to be honest with you, Mr. Chairman, I like getting the town council opinion for options, and also trying to get a timeline as to when we can expect that application to be submitted.
Get a dialogue going, and, you know, at least so they know that we're not, we're not letting what's going on.
No, no, we want a definite answer, you know, a definite timeframe, again, she gave us a definite timeframe, and it's, it's gone and come, it's come and gone, so just let her know we want to have, we want a timeframe when you plan on doing that.
And some possible ramifications through town council.
Okay.
All right, anything else? All right, entertain a motion to adjourn, have, there is signature packet going around.
We have any plans to sign tonight?
We do, we have A and Rs.
For town meeting, are we setting up?
There's a whole bunch of stuff to sign in this packet, so don't go anywhere.
Oh, I am so sorry, Mr. Zwicker asked me another question about bounds.
Yeah, bounds, too?
Underway. Underway. It's being installed.
We haven't adjourned yet, have we?
We have not, we have not. We have not, we have not.
Okay, just, my, uh, Bob was out of the room when we, we talked about the plaque we received.
I came in at the end, I saw.
Yeah, so.
Showing it off.
Aaron, Aaron was just telling about the, the nice dinner we had and everything, and then in the award we got, and, uh, I just want to include you in on that, because you've been highly significant in all of this progress that's been going on, you were so involved in the three-town project, and, uh, if our names are on there, your name should be on there with us, but not, it's not our name, it's just a boy.
No, I just watched.
I want to say thank you for all the hard work you did for us to be able to accomplish that.
And ongoing work you continue to do.
Most definitely.
All right, entertain a motion to adjourn.
For town meeting.
Oh, still going, yep.
Yeah, so, a couple other things, new things have come up with bylaws, and one of them's earth removal, and it's going to be kind of a, a new one for us. The incidental construction for building a home is gray as gray gets. The way it reads is, uh, if it's incidental construction of a home, a lot of folks are just assuming that I could just totally grade the entire lot and build a house, and we need actual numbers to say, here's the amount that you can remove. The building commissioner and I, I have started collecting bylaws from other communities with earth removal that reads a lot better than ours does, and so that's going to be in a future packet for us at a, in a meeting. The other items that happened at town meeting previously, the solar bylaw, and those items are going to be repackaged and provided to you guys the way they were intended after the modifications, so that we can get those ready for town meeting. The other item was Stone Gates Road acceptance, he had some minor things he had to do out there, identified in the peer review, and he's packaging that stuff up for us as well. But, um, the list of bylaws hasn't changed, it's just we've been kind of crowded with the things we've been working on, and we've had a skeleton crew at times where not everybody's here, so, uh, but it's, the work's still going on behind the scenes.[1634.24]